So I'm sorry, my camera on my laptop doesn't work and I couldn't get it on my other computer.
No, I'm not using that. We'll give her that audio.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, she's good.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll call this workshop to order. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And if you have a flag near you, I'm sure Lori probably does, since she's in the boardroom. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. There's Mr. Anderson. Okay. Is Ms. Falls on the call? I think we can take a visual roll call. See, all the board members are here, the superintendent and additional staff. So I think we're good with roll called. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
We do have one member.
Okay. We can't hear the open to the public. She's muted. Her microphone is muted, yeah.
We're working on it.
There we go. Okay, that's good.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Hall and I am here on behalf of my children. My daughter attends AMS. I sent an email and was unable to get a response because I know that everybody is pretty busy during this time. So I'll just read the email that I originally sent. So it says, Dear Martin County School Board Members, It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men. Frederick Douglass. My name is Jessica Hall. I'm a parent of three children ages 12, 10, and 5. My 12-year-old daughter currently attends Anderson Middle School and my son will be an incoming sixth grader in the fall. I am writing because, like you, I want my children as well as other students attending AMS to continue to be successful. I am also writing today as a minority and as a parent of three minority children. My family and I are originally from Louisiana, where there is a rich melting pot of diversity and a true sense of family and community. Moving to Martin County and making the decision to raise minority children in Stuart has not been easy. The Treasure Coast has a multitude of diverse communities. However, Martin County has not made conscious awareness, a conscious awareness, to embrace the differences in a positive manner. As a parent, I have felt that there is no true understanding amongst educators the implications of not recognizing, accepting, and celebrating those differences. My children, they have been taught to celebrate all cultures and to fully embrace diversity. They have also had to learn lessons and to be taught to rise above during adversity. Education is extremely important to our family. My grandparents raised seven children during the Great Depression. My great-grandfather was a sanitation worker and my great-grandmother was a stay-at-home mom. They lived in Shreveport, Louisiana, and all seven of their children graduated from college. This is a miracle for an African-American family to have achieved. Our family legacy is education. Each generation is required to reach the highest educational level as possible. So, when the time came to choose a middle school for my daughter, it was extremely stressful. I toured both Hidden Oaks as well as AMS. School is the environment where children learn academically, emotionally, and socially. I know without a doubt that I made the right decision for my daughter to attend AMS because of Tim Aiken and his leadership. I have seen firsthand that powerful impact, that strong leadership. Is that? Sorry. The strong leadership, the impact that strong leadership can have on educational outcomes. Tim is approachable, authentic, passionate, and most importantly, inclusive. I had the privilege to attend the educational workshop with Tim and his staff during February. I was extremely impressed that more than half of the staff members were there on a Saturday. I felt honored to have been invited as a parent and confident in my decision to send my minority children to AMS. His leadership is progressive, energetic, and he is enthusiastic about helping each student be propelled to the next academic level. I am concerned about who will be the next assistant principal. This, the team that Tim has built is like a fine-tuned machine. The next AP must fit in like a puzzle piece. This person must share the same vision and enhance the programs that have already been implemented in the school. It may not be important to all ethnicities, but it is important to our family and for the others that will come behind my children. We must continue to fight the good fight. We must make good, sound, and pure choices regarding leadership. I implore that the candidate is appointed to this position of assistant principal would have the ability and skill set to work in conjunction with the vision that has already been established at AMS. This person must have the ability to effortlessly connect with staff as well as students to impact academics and cultural awareness. The next AMS assistant principal or principals must possess a true passion and an understanding of education, educating students of all religions, creed, and culture. It is imperative that the next assistant principal is congruent with the current vision. I hope that I am not wrong in believing that Martin County School Board members desire to choose the candidate that will work best with Tim Aiken and his current staff. It is not our differences that divide us. It is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences. So I hope that this has resonated with each of you and that we can work together on this. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I would, I don't know if she can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Marsha Powers, the school board chair. And I just wanted to recommend that you reach out to the superintendent as that is something within the scope of her duties is to hire the new assistant principal. So I would recommend that if you would like to talk about it further, that you reach out to her and then when she makes a recommendation to the board at that point in time, we would act on it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have some questions that I wrote.
So I would, I would suggest that you give those to the superintendent and she would be back in touch with you. A public comment just is really not the place for question and answer. We typically do that after. But someone will be getting back with you.
Okay, thank you. I made five copies because I thought that there were five members. I don't know if you want one copy or do you want a copy to give all to all of the members?
If you leave them with the superintendent, she will make sure that we get a copy.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public there? Lori? No? Okay. Okay, item 3.01, review of pending 2021 Code of Conduct. Ms. Ila Lucci.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody, Madam Chair, school board members, staff, and public. We, I first want to share with you that we had another awesome committee this year and we did a lot of good work. Very few changes, I think mostly unsubstantial, and I'll share that with you. But we were able to meet, come to consensus, worked very well together. So it was another great experience. So I'm going to try to share my screen and go through this with you real quickly. My computer's been moving a little bit slow. So I apologize if it takes a second. I'm not sure why it's not moving into. Okay, well. I apologize for that. I'm trying to get it into presentation mode. If you look at, what I did in the PowerPoint was just kind of bulleted out what our changes were. So we did it by level. In Level 1, if you are looking at the actual Code of Conduct, and I can go to that as soon as I finish with the PowerPoint, you can see that we removed a couple of Level 1 infractions. And the reason being is because they were already listed in Level 2. So we kept them at Level 2, understanding that in the menu of consequences, Level 1 consequences can be applied. So it didn't seem appropriate to keep it in Level 1 and Level 2. It was duplicated. So disruption of class was removed. It is already existent, Level 2. Failure to report and complete assigned to school detention was removed. Failure to report was also moved to Level 2, and I'll explain that when we get there. ID violation, we changed a little bit because now with the new district-wide IDs, obviously, students are expected to wear them. So we just changed a little bit of the verbiage. And that just says that they must visibly wear the school-issued ID on the front upper torso. We also included that defacing or altering the ID would be prohibited. Skipping class, we removed school because that's addressed in its own separate category. Unauthorized absent from assigned class. So that's just basically how we define that. Continued Level 1 revisions, we removed theft and vandalism from Level 1. It already exists in Level 2. So what we did was we altered the definition there to include up to $300. And I'll again explain that further when I get into Level 2. Responses and sanctions in all of the levels were just alphabetized. Level 2 revisions, we had a lot of discussion around disruption and really, really good discussion. And really, the committee came up to just removing the last sentence, which is behavior that impedes the learning of others will result in immediate removal, which may include an alternative placement. Again, it is in the menu to do if a student is continuously disruptive or if the disruption is severe enough that it is impeding learning. That is an option. But we didn't feel that we had to sit there and put that just specifically in that definition of an infraction because we don't do that for all of the others. Excessive referrals was removed. We've never had, we've never used that. It's, we've looked at data. There was never anyone on a referral for excessive referrals. So we felt that it was just something we could remove from the Code of Conduct. Number 9, failure to report. We had moved, like I said, from Level 1. It was a Level 1 infraction and we just moved that to Level 2. Fireworks was removed and gambling was removed from Level 2. It is included in CESSR. So if it's fireworks or it could be contraband, if it's gambling, it's a CESSR. Level 2 revisions, leaving school without school and parent approval. So that's, again, if a student decides, well, maybe I'll just go out to lunch without getting a parent note for leaving the campus and actual school off-campus note, that's where this would apply. In number 19, we removed minor and we just left physical contact. So physical contact is physical contact. It's a non-mutual physical contact without injury to the victim. For number 20 with non-prescription drugs, this came up mainly in discussion with high school. We included OTC to define non-prescription drugs. And we also added distribution here. For instance, if I had Sudafed and I was distributing them at maybe, you know, 10 or giving them away or selling them. And the rest basically is the same. Only thing that we changed was we added use and distribution. And then we also said, we described when we would use the CESSR code, which is D R U for drug. And that's if the drug is being used for chemical intoxication. Okay, so there's a difference of me taking Sudafed for a cold or me taking 10 Sudafeds because I want to feel differently. We also included dietary supplements. Number 28, repeated failure to serve detention, we just removed totally. 19, this is where we talked about theft and vandalism. This came, we removed it from Level 1. And what we did here in Level 2 was we just put, we didn't put a minimum. We just put up to $300. So it could be $5 up to $300. Same thing with vandalism. It's up to $1,000. Again, responses and sanctions were put in alphabetical order. Level 3 revisions are the CESSR. And that's the school environmental safety incident reporting. That's what we have to report to the state. In Board Docs, we did upload what DOE is bringing to the state board. There are very minor changes on that. Most of it is just clarifying language as to consultation of law enforcement, you know, things of that nature. They've included vaping-related, and I'll get into that more and show you a little bit about what they put forward. It did go through first round and May 13th will be the final vote from the state board. Again, what I would request is that the board would obviously approve the Code of Conduct pending, you know, any CESSR, state board approval of any CESSR changes. The Level 4 revisions, again, those are all legislative. We just removed written threats to kill. We didn't feel it needed to be a standalone. It is addressed in CESSR. And it is also addressed in Level 2 with the off-campus felony. And with the discretion of the principal, they can still recommend expulsion or alternative placement or other school-based disciplines. So we felt that it didn't need to just be its own standalone in the Code of Conduct. Moving through, transportation was updated. So we sent this to the Department of Transportation and thank Director Kailene Watts for just kind of looking at this and giving an update. So she just really kind of updated the language and appropriateness of, you know, of what is now on the bus. You can see she changed the "may" to "will". They will be assigned a seat on the bus and students must sit in their assigned seat. They would keep the aisle doorway clear. No large items can be transported on the bus. And all times, all items must be held on their lap. Number 18, the students are not allowed to wear headsets. Only one earbud is permissible. And then number 19, all students riding the bus must have their school-issued ID visible. So those were the changes that Ms. Watts made. We consulted for technology. We consulted our digital learning, George Vogli, and we consulted with Paul McGinnis, who worked collaboratively with the Code of Conduct Committee. Actually, came in and gave a very nice presentation. So they actually put, kind of updated what we had. And what we have in the Code of Conduct is actually in our continuity plan as well that went before the state for our digital distance learning. We also included in Appendix B Florida statutes for attendance policy and enforcement of school attendance. It was recommended from our student representative, our sophomore student representative, that gender pronouns be updated to all neutral pronouns. Going through our CESSR updates, this is where I kind of just summarized a little bit of the most important pieces, what the state has put forward. In the past, other major infractions included the word would need law enforcement intervention. They are now changing that to consultation because intervention was really more of, you know, if they didn't act, did that mean that it wasn't another major? So now consultation makes it though if law enforcement doesn't feel it met the criminal standard, we, the schools could still code as another major. Sexual harassment, the state is just recommending that the last sentence be deleted. And that says, "An incident when one person demands a sexual favor from another under the threat of physical harm or adverse consequence." CESSR continued, they did add tobacco, which, well, tobacco was in as TBC. They did add electronic here. In the past, they also changed the 18, age 18, to age 21, since that's now a federal age. And they also added vaping-related. We've not ever had that. So if there was an incident, let's say, that had to do with bullying and it had to do with an electronic device, then the schools can code it that it may have been bullying, but it was also vaping-related. And that just says that all CESSR incidents that involve the use of non-combustible vaping products such as electronic cigarettes, vapes, pens, electronic nicotine delivery systems, and the liquid used contains nicotine or a controlled substance such as THC. So far, are there any questions? And I can get out of this and go into the Code of Conduct, the actual. Are there any discussions or questions, comments? Board members, staff?
I have several. It's Lee.
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Powers, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'm going to start at the beginning. Teresa?
Yes, ma'am.
So on page 2, when you have the overview that talks about students being responsible for their behavior and being held accountable, the second paragraph?
Yes.
Where it talks about on-school grounds, attending school functions, being transported, et cetera. Should we add a sentence in there that has something about participating in online learning or virtual learning or something along those lines?
We could certainly put, or in such instances, we're distance learning, sure.
So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I just think that's something that.
I mean, it's certainly addressed in our technology piece, but it's fine to put it there as well. I have no problem with that.
Does any other board member have a comment?
I'm good with that. That's fine.
Mike, Tony, Victoria?
Sorry, I actually unmute myself. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm fine with that also.
I think silence is consent. So in this case, getting undone. If you guys, if you have any, if the board members have any issue, I can see you guys. My camera just doesn't work. So just kind of wave your hand if you want to respond while Lee's talking.
Okay. Page number 13. Okay, I'm tabbing this real quick. Your new item number 11 about technology.
13.
Can we also add the mission statement somewhere on here? Teresa? Maybe underneath at the bottom of the page where the table of comments is, contents are? So on page 13. Okay, on page 13, number 11, technology. I don't think you need the word minor since we no longer have minor and major.
Okay.
Correct. Page 16. Or actually, you still need that. But okay, here was my problem is on page 16, technology is listed as computer/technology major. And I'm thinking you should use the same language. Like you should use, in Level 1, you should use technology minor. And in Level 2, you should use technology major. So you can find it easily without having to think, oh, I don't find a technology major. So at first, I thought there was no technology major until I found it under the computer, number 4. So does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. Let me just go back up to computer. Yes.
You would leave Level 1 as technology infraction minor and you would change Level 2 to technology infraction major.
Okay, so we'll leave minor in technology infraction for Level 1. And then I will flip it to technology infraction major for Level 2 and I'll put computer in parents.
Correct. Well, and it's not just computer. So I mean, I don't know whether you even need that there.
I don't even need that. You're exactly right because it says misuse of computer.
Number 6, disruption, disruption Level 2. I don't think you need a Level 2 since you eliminated Level 1. See that?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
On page 17. So on page 17. So I have a question. The question is, so I read this carefully that has to do with threats of vi. And I'm thinking mainly about threats of violence, all right? I'm going to use a weapon and come do something bad, right? So in the CESSR language, you have to have intent in order for that to be true, correct?
Correct. Well, you have to have the three components, which means reasonable fear.
Right, one which is intent. But it was my understanding that even if you don't have intent, it could be, it could be considered an off-campus felony. It could be considered a threat of violence if you can't do, even if you have no intent of doing it.
Correct.
Correct? So if off-campus felony on page 17, number 21, if that's supposed to include threats of violence, should there be some language in there so you know that? So you don't just think, well. Or is it only handled if it's a felony? Do you understand what I'm trying to ask you?
It's only, yeah, so it would only be a felony. And what that goes, why we have off-campus felony in Level 2 is for the felony hearing procedure. So if it was something such as a threat or something that could cause a major disruption on a campus or where there's a safety concern, then the principal can do a suspension. They would use the off-campus felony based on statute and then go through a felony hearing process, which means they could recommend replacement or, you know, they could recommend other discipline through the process.
But the off, this is Marsha, but the off-campus felony doesn't necessarily have to be violence.
No.
It could be multitude of things, so.
Yes. Yeah, typically, if, you know, if there's a felony that happens off-campus, you know, and it isn't violent, you know, again, it's up to the discretion of the school principal by following the Florida statute in the hearing process to determine whether or not that felony would have an adverse impact on their campus.
So here's what I'm reading when I read that. Number 21, off-campus felony says, "Any charging affidavit listing a felony crime for a student will be reviewed to determine if the student's presence may have an adverse effect on the school environment." But it's not just their presence. It's also their actions, correct?
If, well, if their action, the action that caused them to be charged with a felony is going to have an adverse impact on the campus.
So am I allowed, am I allowed to say that I'm coming to a school to do harm to a bunch of students if I really have no intent to do it? Is that a felony?
Yes.
It could be under 3610 if it was done electronically.
Correct. So where is?
It could be. It could be.
So where is that captured in our Code of Conduct? Where is the electronic?
If someone is charged with 836-10 off-campus, then that would go under off-campus felony, which would be number 21.
So, so what I'm saying is I think that needs to be reworded then, because I think that there are actions, if our intent is that there are actions that you could do that would not necessarily require my presence affecting a school environment, it's affecting something I did. I send an email that says I'm gonna come and hurt Victoria in math class.
So, so I can use, I can, I can reword that to use basically a synopsis of the statute, you know, where I could say a student that's formally charged with a felony.
But, but I think we're, I think, I understand where you're going with this, Lee, but I think that if someone made that sort of threat, the presence on the campus would be, could be disruptive because some people take it very seriously and are afraid to come to school as a result of that happening. Or it could be totally something different and somebody's charged with dealing drugs and they drive their Porsche on the campus and everybody thinks it's really cool. Well, that's disruptive to me. So I think there's different levels of how the presence, how their presence, even though the actual act may not, the behavior, yeah, I think we're overthinking it, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to, so I look in level four, I think it's level four, maybe this is three, hold on a minute. I look in level three and I see that if they, to qualify for level three, threat or intimidation in level three, I have to meet the three components, one of which is intent. So if I really had no intent to hurt anybody, I just wanted to disrupt life, okay? So I'm not a level three because I had no intent of really hurting anybody. But in level two, to get me for the off-campus felony, which is sending something, posting something on Facebook, et cetera, my presence has to be there. But my presence, I don't think I necessarily have to be there in order for it to cause a major disruption. Do you understand what I'm?
This is Guillermo, can I say something? This is Guillermo, can I say something or?
Of course.
So Ms. Roberts, one of the things that, that we look at whenever we look at an off-campus felony as opposed to a threat that happens, whether it be, you know, through email, social media, written on a desk, or a wall in the school, something like that, those are very specific to a disruption, to, you know, even the infraction, other major incidents has been used for those types of situations, right? Because law enforcement, if you look at level three, other major incident says that whenever a student, you know, does something where law enforcement has to be actually, you know, called upon and they have to respond and they have to do something along those lines, kind of an investigation on their own, then that's whenever we use those infractions, other major incidents or disruption on campus. The off-campus felony that we've used for the most part, at least in my experience, has been, for example, if a student goes to a grocery store and holds somebody, you know, at gunpoint, that's nothing that's related to the school, but maybe the clerk that was working there was the father of a kid, you know, that goes to school. So then that infraction itself may not necessarily be a threat to the school, but now the other student that, you know, whose father was working at the store may have some kind of fear now because of that behavior that the kid, you know, displayed. So that's kind of how we've used the off-campus felony, is kind of for, for those other outline type of felonies that a student may be charged with that will have an impact on the campus itself.
Okay, thank you, Glora, that makes complete sense to me. I understand that. So Teresa, on page 23, for other major infractions, level three, number 12?
Yes.
When you're giving examples, which include producing or knowingly using counterfeit money, participating in gambling activities, possessing child pornography, possessing drug paraphernalia, could you add something that says, that addresses threats of violence or something?
So, so level three is the state definitions. This is, this, this isn't anything that, that we, we would have any input on. So this is the Cessar part that they've brought to the, to the state, I mean, the state, that the state's brought to a state board.
And so they, they have given us those examples?
Yes, this is exactly their definitions from, from what was approved by the state board.
Okay, and the only reason that I'm belaboring this is that we have had incidents of students who have made threats either via Facebook or posting something or Instagram and not realize that they were doing something really wrong. And I'm, I'm just thinking that if we don't call it out in the Code of Conduct and say that it's something that's really wrong.
Well, we, we address that in the beginning where we talk about threats of violence on page two and we identify that students are prohibited from making a verbal, written or symbolic threat of violence directly or indirectly against anyone. Any threat of violence must be reported immediately, teacher to a school administrator. So I'm weak, and it, it goes on. It says, "Subject to appropriate disciplinary consequences up to, including suspension, expulsion, arrest and prosecution."
I, I get that, but then our only time that we're talking about threats of violence in our levels is when we start to get to level three, which goes to Cessar, correct?
And I don't think that adding, I don't think that adding that the threats of violence is, would be a bad thing. I don't think it changes anything in Cessar or any, I mean, it shouldn't be an issue unless we were quoting statute or something, but there's no quotes around it. So I mean, it would just be one more place where it's addressed.
So we address, we, and, and that's fine, I will certainly put in whatever the board would like to, like us to put in. On level two, we have threat to harm, which is non-criminal. It's making a verbal or written statement or violent gesture which does not meet criminal criteria.
What number are you looking at?
Well, right now on my page, it's 30, but.
I stop at 27.
Let me, let me go up here. I'm, yeah, I'm in a different, my, my pages are different because it's not edited.
I stop at profanity. Are you looking at level two?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and we, okay, there it is. So if you look at threat to harm, where my cursor is right here.
I don't have that, I don't have that page in my copy. Teresa, are you in level three?
No, this is level, level two. I, I, can you see it on my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that, this is level two and on my screen, it's page 19, and that's where it has threat to harm, making a verbal or written statement or violent gesture which does not meet criminal criteria, the threat is vague, indirect, the information contained in the threat is impossible or seems unlikely to be carried out.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you. On number 20, on page 17.
Okay, wait, wait, Ms. Roberts, before we move on, what, what did you want for, let me go back to the Cessar, what did you want me to include for, was it other major? What was the language that you, you would, you would like to see for the other major to include threats of harm?
Well, I think somewhere we need to include threats of harm that are done electronically, that are done either by posting or something. I mean, I, you know, that's the Instagram, Facebook, et cetera. And I don't know where the appropriate place to put it. If you're putting it in the section three, level threes that have the Cessar definitions, maybe if you italicized it so then it was clear that it didn't come from the stuff you were lifting straight from the state.
Right, well, and I, I want to be clear too, because I don't want to, I don't want to pigeonhole anything and say that any threat electronically is going to be another major because it could possibly be something more or it could possibly be something less.
So let me ask you a question. So if I, if I threaten somebody with my electronic device on, on Instagram, is that a level two threat to harm non-criminal or is that an off-campus felony? Or is that a Cessar violation?
It's, it's a felony that involves law enforcement.
Yeah, so, you know, law enforcement, if law enforcement arrests, then they would arrest under 836-10, which is a felony.
Okay, then what I'm saying is in number 21 on page 17, I think you need, after you say, "Any charging affidavit of felony crime for a student will be reviewed to determine if a student's presence may have an adverse effect on the school environment," and the statute, right? I think you need another sentence on there that says, "This includes electronically transmitted threats of violence as per Florida statute 836-10."
Okay.
Does that work?
Got it.
Okay, looking up above that.
Can we, hello?
Chris, where did you, or I mean, Lee, where did you add this? Because the pages are not consistent.
It's under level two, number 21, off-campus felony.
Teresa, can you put that on a screen so we can see it?
Scroll down, Teresa.
So off-campus felony is right here. So any charging affidavit listed felony crime for a student will be reviewed, determine if the student's presence may have an adverse effect on the school environment as per statute 100, 1006.09, and then I will add to include electronically transmitted threats of violence as per 836-10.
Yes.
Okay, on that page, you see on number 20?
Mike, did you, one second, Mike, did you have something about that?
No, no, I just wanted Teresa to put it on the screen because I couldn't see it.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts, go ahead.
Okay. So I see that if a chemical is being used for intoxication, it needs to go to level three, the DRU definition, which is on page 22, number eight.
Yes.
So if you go to page 22, number eight. So when you, when you start with that, it says illegal drug possession or use. Then the next sentence is, "The use of possession of any drug narcotic controlled substance or any substance when used for chemical intoxication." I think after the word substance, you should say in parentheses, "Including non-prescription drugs." Because that's what you mean, correct? You referred me from the former level to this to tell me that this was the offense if I'm using it to be chemically intoxicated. But when I read this, because it's talking about illegal drug possession and use, it would not cover me taking a multitude of some other counterdrugs.
Sudafed or NyQuil.
Does that make sense, Teresa?
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I read it, I guess differently because I see where it says the use of possession of any drug, any drug, narcotic controlled substance and then or any substance when used for chemicals. So I can clarify that.
But in that parenthesis, I think what, what is confusing is in parentheses, right after the statute reference, it says illegal drug possession or use. And it kind of tends to, to say that this is only about illegal drug possession.
I will include OTC.
Okay.
And so, oh, I'm just, Chris, okay, good deal. Let's, if we go back to the threats, Lee, and you were talking about the threats online, Frank just reminded me that written threats, if it says written threats, it covers all written threats. So a written threat could be a note, a written threat could be on the wall, a written threat could be on social media, so I don't know where.
And that's all covered on 836-10?
Yes.
So then Teresa, on page 17, it should say written threats and electronic transmission.
So 836-10 reads, "Any person who writes or composes and also sends or procures the sending of any letter, unsccribed communication or electronic communication, whether such letter or communication by signed or anonymous, to any person containing a threat to kill or do bodily injury to the person to whom such letter or communication is sent."
Okay, so if you can lift, so if you can lift language from there that covers that and put it in and refer to the 836-10.
Right, because we've had, we've had threats on bathroom walls.
Okay. Page 23, which is level three, number 15.
Wait, say that again, where are we?
Level, level three, number 15, it's on my page 23.
Okay.
Level 15, number 15, sexual harassment. So did, Teresa, did you just tell us that that was going to be, that last sentence after SBE rule was going to be deleted, "An incident when one person demands a sexual favor from another"? Is that being deleted?
If it's approved by the state board, yes.
Okay, so we're waiting to see if it, we're waiting for the state board to determine?
Right, it's gone through the first round, so it looks like it'll be deleted.
Okay. And the same thing with number 19, changing the tobacco age from 18 to 21?
Yes, we didn't, we didn't change any of this because it's not final yet. That's why I included the updated version in board docs for you to review of what they're proposing.
And that includes the vaping one, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. On page 25, level four. These are all Cessar violations?
No, these are all Florida statute zero tolerance.
So they don't necess, but they require, they require reporting, correct?
Yes, they're all, they're all felonies, yes.
They're all Cessar violations, but they're also in the Florida statute called out specifically for zero tolerance.
So is there a three-letter code for four and nine?
There is not a three-letter Cessar code.
For four or nine, okay.
No.
Hold on, let me see if I had anything else in here. Student use of wireless communication devices. So now I did not go back and read the policy, but I believe in my memory that the policy that says for, see where it says, "Students may use wireless communication devices, WCDs, in the following instances: before and after school, school activities, instructional purposes and on a school bus or school board provided vehicle," right? I believe the instructional purposes has to be under the supervision or direction of a teacher or staff member, is that correct?
For the BY, the bring your own device, yes.
So when we're saying that, "Students may use a wireless communication device in the following instance: for instructional purposes, i.e. taking notes, recording class lectures or writing papers." Do I need my permission from a teacher to do that?
Yeah, some students, if they're, if they have it written into their accommodation plan, if they're IEP 504, sometimes it's an accommodation plan for the student, it, within the teacher, the teacher might say, "We're doing a Kahoot, everyone take your wireless communication device out."
So should that? So should that bullet that says "for instructional purposes" have that language in it that is requiring the permission or direction of a teacher, right? Because I think that's what our policy is. So if you can pull it straight from the policy? Hang on. And that's all I had, except can we put the mission statement on the front or second page?
Mission statement, got it.
Thank you.
Also, Teresa, on the front page where it has table of contents with the page numbers for all of the things, it does not line up with the page number that's in the document. So if you can go back and format.
Yeah, we have to accept the changes. And then, so this right now is just, like I said, even Level 3 isn't even done yet because we don't have all of that.
Right.
So as soon as we accept all the changes, it will line up.
Okay, yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that
Sure.
I'm pretty sure that you realize that these pages don't align yet, yes. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks.
No, it's hard to work here, even when I talk with Chase to change things because it's different pages, so I completely understand. But that's just because it's all off the format, so we will certainly.
Nice work, Teresa, you and the entire committee.
I appreciate it, thank you, good job.
Any other recommended changes or?
Mr. DiTrleese, did you have anything? No? Ms. Duffenthaler?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, did you have anything?
No, I didn't have anything, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was unmuting. I worked on the committee and I just want to thank everybody for all the work they did. It's a great group to work with. They really scoured the plan and really spent a lot of time looking at the minutia of it to make sure that it met the needs of all the administrators and the school programs. So thank you to all those members, and thank you Teresa and Michelle for serving as the facilitators, really appreciate that.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah, I appreciate your work also, Ms. Alucci. I will say that this type stuff is probably so involved until we can look at this next week and still make some more changes. So, you know, that's just the nature of it, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you very much to everyone, Ms. Alucci, for leading this, and also to Ms. Duffenthaler for participating for the board. We really appreciate that. So if there is no other questions, we will see this back at our regular board meeting in May. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay. All right, so we are now on to item 4.01. Is there, does the board have a preference on how you want to go about this? We didn't really discuss it at our last meeting on the format. If you have specific questions that you want to ask, and we'll just start, and you all can, we can go around. I'm open to suggestions. Does everybody just want to ask their question? A question? We don't even have a list of questions.
I have a little list of questions from last time, so if you want me to start by asking a question, I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great.
Okay. Hi, Audra, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you very much. Hello, everyone.
Thank you for interviewing for this position.
Thank you for considering me.
You're welcome. My question would be, how do you keep up with changes in regulations and laws? And give us an example of a recent pronouncement which may apply to our school district.
I am active in the Florida School Finance Officers Association, the Government Finance Officers Association. I belong to both the AICPA, American Institute of CPAs, as well as the FICPA, Florida Institute. I get resources from those organizations, weekly, monthly. Try to keep up with my professional reading at all times. Obviously, lots of guidance coming down from DOE at all times. There's two recent pronouncements that really affect the school district. One specifically is going to affect internal accounts dramatically. And that, the first one is GASB 84. That's a GASB pronouncement on fiduciary activities and how internal accounts are going to have to be reported in the school district's financials, not just as a fiduciary fund as they've been in the past, but potentially as a special revenue fund. That's an activity that it needs to be addressed by your next internal auditor and evaluated because, given the nature of control, level of control by the district, meaning the principals or the administration, that determines how that reporting's going to have to be done. So that's something we've actually been analyzing within finance, trying to figure out how we're going to handle that. The second one that affects the district that's pretty recent is GASB 87, which is a new pronouncement on lease accounting and how we have to capitalize almost every lease now. It used to just be certain long-term leases, and they've tightened up those rules, and they want us capitalizing as a leased asset, anything, even a portable that the school district is leasing. So those are two of the recent pronouncements that are out, that affect us, that we're currently working on, so.
Mrs. Powers, may I ask another question? Or would you like to go to somebody else?
Again, it's totally up to the board. I think if you have the list of questions that we ask, because I do not have that, I'm fine with you continuing, and then we'll move around to the other board members for specific questions.
Okay, be happy to do that. And I do have a question that's not on this, but I'll wait till we do that with the other board members. So I'll just ask these questions. Tell us about a serious operational issue you encountered in the past, and how did you discover it, and what solutions did you recommend?
So in one of my past lives, we found a significant lack of internal controls over the fixed assets of our governmental entity. Assets were walking away, and there was not an adequate inventory process occurring out in the various locations to make sure that those assets were being properly inventoried. Amazingly enough, the Auditor General hadn't found that to be an issue, but we did. And we implemented a much more routine inventory monitoring process whereby the ones, the assets that were capital over 1,000 were at least annually inspected by one of our auditors. And then the items below that, it was done in groups. Like IT or ET here would go out and do the technology assets every year, even some that were less than the thresholds because obviously, like with technology now, a lot of things are below thresholds. And that's where our biggest problem was, were assets under the capitalization limit that were walking away because they weren't getting inventoried. Yet there were so many of them. Laptops are a prime example out in schools. As long as your technology department is looking at them, you can make sure that you're maintaining control over those assets. So we discovered it because we were doing, we had a listing of all the assets that had been acquired in a particular timeframe, and we had asked the people out in the locations to please give us counts. And the counts were way off from the lists of purchases. When we dove into it, it was because it wasn't being monitored and things were walking away. Nobody was paying attention. So with the inventory monitoring process we put in place, our IT folks were doing it every six months on technology, and a lot of it was actually automated through the network systems. If a device logged onto the system, that ensured that it was obviously being in present and being used. If something was not logging onto the system in a particular timeframe, it would go out and look for that item. So those were the types of measures that we implemented to take over all the internal controls on fixed assets.
Thank you. Next question, how do you develop an audit plan and what is important to consider?
Let me think the best way to. So obviously, the very first thing you have to do is determine what your concerns or issues are. Who are going to be the involved parties? Who is it we need to work with? Look at who's responsible for the various transactions and/or processes that you may have some type of issue with. So then you document the controls over those processes. Where do we have segregation of duties? Where do we not have segregation of duties? Who's authorized to do transactions? What records are retained to support those transactions? What kind of supervision monitoring's going on? What kind of physical safeguards are in place to make something work properly? And then, of course, always the IT controls are always a thing as you're developing your audit plan. What controls are there? And once you determine those things, you figure out what your risks are. Where are your risk areas? And you determine some type of a sampling process. Most of the time, those are random samples. Say, if you're out in internal accounts at a particular school and you're going to look at a range of checks, you might take, you've got 1,000 for the year, and you run a random sample of 50, and you're looking for who they were payable to, and maybe testing to see if any of the checks that were payable to a vendor had some connection to an employee or a relationship that you're looking for. It depends what you're looking for, but you want to determine compliance and what those risks are. And you try to develop your sampling process around that to make sure that you're going to catch whatever's happening out there.
Great, thank you. What process do you follow when you detect fraud?
So I can think back to a particular fraud situation. When I determined the fraud, here's an interesting one for you, just a little case. So I was actually doing P-card transactions in a former role, and this was not at a school district, this was at a city. And we were doing P-card transactions, and there were some transactions that looked fine on the surface. They had been authorized. But we actually asked this one department, "Where are your materials? Where are these things that you bought?" And what we actually accidentally uncovered, and the reason I asked is it was really odd because this one location had a whole bunch of transactions on their P-card statement that were Square transactions. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Square, but that's a remote, little remote, where if somebody's got a little card, they attach it to their phone, and they can run a credit card on it. Well, there was a whole bunch of Square transactions. Almost everything that this location bought were Square transactions. It kind of threw up a red flag. They couldn't provide any of the materials that were bought. And it turned out, there was a little scheme going on with the purchasing officer ordering things that were not actually received. They had set up a personal Square account, and they were using the governmental entity's Square to pay themselves, but then the things weren't delivered. And so the Square account had the ability to change the vendor name. So, you know, I could have ABC Company today, and XYZ Company tomorrow, and PPC Company tomorrow after that, and they could just change the vendor name and run the card over and over. They said they were buying something, and it was something they were allowed to buy, so it was properly authorized by a supervisor, but it turned out to be a thing. And it wasn't large, but it turned out to be about $6,000. And we did prosecute, and the purchasing officer was involved and ended up having to be terminated. So it was an interesting scenario. You never know, if you're skeptical enough, something that's a weird pattern, there's always something wrong.
Right, thank you. What are important elements of internal control systems, and what process would you follow to review them?
Okay, so probably the most important internal controls are segregation of duties, making sure that if you're, say, in cash handling or whatever, that it's more than one person, always more than one person with the duties that conflict with each other. Those are easily tested. You obviously, if someone's cutting checks, they shouldn't be the one who is recording deposits, that type of thing. Transaction authorization, making sure that the people who authorize transactions are independent of the people receiving the goods so that there is no opportunity to order things that are, say, not needed. Retention of records, making sure the records to support all those transactions are there. Supervision monitoring of the staff and the processes, making sure that happens. Physical safeguards, locked cabinets, locked rooms, ways to physically safeguard your assets. And then all of the IT controls, which our Auditor General goes over in detail during operational audits and financial audits. Those are probably the primary controls. And what they assure is completeness in recording and presentation of transactions, making sure that things are properly valued and valid, real transactions. Does that answer your question, Victoria?
Yes, it does answer mine. I asked the other board members, are they okay with that? I guess so. Okay. Describe a situation where you experienced conflict with a colleague or within a team. What happened, and how did you resolve it?
Let me think. Okay, so a conflict that I actually encountered was I had a fellow director, actually, not here, but in another role, a fellow director that was, had pretty much delegated all of their authority to their subordinate, to their secretary. And they were just randomly approving things, and I didn't ever want to get that person in trouble in some way, but I needed that person's input to make sure things were being done correctly. So it turned out that person just had a lack of technology skills. So I went in and tried to counsel them, train them on the technology components, and why and how what they were doing was going to end up biting them at some point. And I think I managed to do that, maintaining a good professional relationship with that person without ever even having to disclose it to my superiors. We just took care of it. And we got them to where, we took the login credentials away from the secretary, changed everything over, and that person assured me they would continue to do it right. I kind of monitored, I could tell right away when something wasn't getting done, and then they started to call me and ask for advice and help. And I think it helped that person grow as a professional, and me as an accounting person, it made me feel a lot better that something was getting done properly. And the person who needed to be approving things really was doing the approvals and hadn't passed it off to a secretary.
So some of these questions overlap, so I'm not going to ask all the questions on the list because you've answered many of them. One I will ask you is, speak to any experience with procedural training of others, including creating written manuals and instructions?
Over the years, I've written various procedures manuals. In my time at Polk County Schools, we wrote all the accounting procedures manuals for finance. We had changed systems. We went from an old, oh, this shows my age a little bit, but we went from an old mainframe system to SAP, which is a very large ERP system. And we had to document that from the ground up for the AG. So we wrote all the policy, we had to rewrite all the policies and procedures manuals for that school district. What was the other part of your question?
Well, it said, "speak to any experience of procedural training of others, including creating written manuals and instructions," so.
Thank you. As far as the training component, that's probably my favorite thing that I do for the district right now. And I'm sure some of the people on the watch list here that are watching us have experienced my red book trainings. But I love, I think that's probably my favorite part of my job, is to get out and train school personnel, principals, their secretaries, their bookkeepers on how to do proper accounting. And I've been working a lot with the secretaries, doing the dual role of CFO right now and internal auditor. We've been trying to train, what do we need to do to prepare for a conversion to the new SBAA module? And how do we have to treat vendors? And they're helping me get the vendors that are in School Cash into Skyward. I'm teaching them why and how. I've taught them all how to recognize who has to be 1099 and who doesn't. And so that, to me, is probably the most rewarding part of a job, is actually teaching somebody all the things that they don't know and why they have to do it, so they don't feel that it's unnecessary.
Great, thank you. One more question, and then I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Powers. Speak to any experience with operations, non-fiscal audits.
Okay, non-fiscal. Probably, I would take a construction audit as non-fiscal, correct? Would that be one of those types of things?
Lee could probably answer that. Would you?
No, Audra, I would, I'm thinking more operational audits. So efficiency operational audits are not necessarily straight down to money compliance, but compliance on other levels. So whether it's standard-based compliance, whether it's a reporting requirement, whether it's, you know, those type things is what I would be looking at.
Understood. So I've done grant compliance, not the fiscal part, but the grant compliance. And within certain grants, back to my days at Early Childhood Resources, we actually had to do census compliance. Certain grants required us to serve a, just like school lunches, a certain percentage with income thresholds, in certain income thresholds. So we would test all the applications that had come in for people who wanted to participate in the CDBG grant, for example, for energy. They all had to meet a certain poverty threshold. But we weren't looking at the finances of the grant, but we were looking at all the applicants for benefits under that grant that CDBG was a county grant with Polk County back in the days when I was an auditor. And so we tested compliance, that they were testing the people who benefited from the grant from receiving these energy services and/or retrofit, to retrofit their houses that they qualified for the services.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Powers, turning it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll just kind of work around, starting to my right, Mr. DiTrleese. Do you have any questions? On my screen, you're to my right.
Well, that's okay, I'm on top on my screen, so that's good. No, I don't. I think the question list was very good. I haven't seen the other list yet either. Is that, do you have that list, Audra?
What other list are we referring to?
Is there a list of questions that you have?
Nope.
Besides what?
I came in blind.
No, this, these were, the ones that Ms. Stephan Dole read were the same ones that we had posed to other, our other applicants that we have interviewed in the past. So now it's kind of time for, you know, if you have any additional questions or clarifications that you would like, now's the time for individual board members to ask, yeah.
Do you, I mean, have you done any school district internal auditing in the past?
I actually oversaw the internal audit process at Polk, not all the time, but interim, on an interim basis. So I did a lot of it. I also did a lot of their, we had a, we had a sales tax issue, like you do, a sales tax, a half cent sales tax, and we were doing some of our own internal construction auditing. So that's my experience. I was more on the CFO slash Senior Director of Finance side, but I often got involved on all the overload that internal audit couldn't do, like the construction auditing. We decided to do that as a team. They had a Director of Internal Audit there and she and I worked together to do the construction auditing on the big projects for sales tax.
Well, thank you. And, you know, for the last year and a half or so, how long has it been since you were with the district?
Since July of eighteen.
Of eighteen.
So coming up on two years.
Almost two years. You worked for the superintendent. Having to work for a school board of five members, how do you feel you could handle having five superiors?
I have no problem with that.
Use that word loosely, Audra. I'm not, I don't consider myself superior to anybody. Call it a boss, call it whatever you want. What would you call it, Tony?
Just somebody that you work with.
Yeah, there you go, okay. I mean, a lot of direction comes from a lot of people and, and I know, I, I don't think it's as stressful or as demanding as the job that you've already, that you've already done for the district. Certainly you'd be, you'd be responsible to five different people.
Understood. And I would only hope that the board would, if, if, if anyone had conflicting interests, that they would help me to prioritize, and the board chair probably would take that role, prioritize the order in which things got addressed. Because obviously with five people and five different sets of concerns and maybe five sets of assignments coming in, I would hope that there would be some guidance on what was the most important, because everybody's important to themselves. And so as a, as a team, as a board team, hopefully you all would be able to come to some type of consensus on what you would want worked on first.
Right. And I know you've been doing some of the work and farming out some of the work and overseeing it. Have you, have you looked at the previous reports or schedules that our former auditor had? And would you recommend anything different? Would you follow on the same footsteps or criterias? Some of them have to be done every year, some may be special projects, but let me know how you feel.
Correct. So the answer is yes. I have looked at them. Some of them will be good starting points. Some can, some are pretty simplistic. Doris Slossberg, for example, is relatively simplistic. There are a limited number of transactions. That's actually something you can do a 100% audit on. You can double check everything that's in Doris Slossberg because there's limited dispersments. When you get into the internal accounts audits, you can see where your problem areas have been in the past. You can check to see if those still exist. One of the things I think that causes a lot of the issues in the schools in the internal accounts area is simply staff turnover. I've seen a ton of that just in this year that I've been helping the schools through things. May, you know, some of, some of our larger schools have had significant turnover in their clerical slash bookkeeping staff, and that causes a learning curve and it causes things to drop and not always be handled appropriately. So those are areas that I would obviously have to keep tabs on. Some of that can be done exactly the same way. Some probably needs to be expounded on. If there's an area, especially if it recurs from year to year, then there's something that needs to be done to help that area to, to where it doesn't keep happening. So, and our system, I will say that the system that they're currently on, which is why at this last board meeting, you all approved a new module to Skyward to put everybody on equal ground and put it in the ERP system. I think that in itself will eliminate some of the challenges that were faced by my predecessor. For example, the 1099 situation. He was struggling to try to get the information when that information could have already been in Skyward and been shared. So having it all in one place, I'm hoping will help with some of those other things. And I, I actually look forward to some varying projects. If, if there are concerns of the board, things that you want to have looked at out there, I, I welcome those kinds of projects because those are what keeps life interesting.
Good. Last but not least, having been a director at the district and having worked at director salary, this salary range is a little different on this. Do you feel comfortable with that? You know, I, I don't want to see disappointment in, in, you know, in, in moving from a director to a non-director position.
Understood. And let me explain why.
Salary range, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if you know recently, but personally, I actually sold my house in Palm City and I relocated to a little, little tiny little place off of Indian River Drive up in Fort Pierce. It's a fixer. It's quite a fixer. It's been a challenge, but I actually paid cash for my house. I no longer have a mortgage. I've put myself in a different position intentionally. I wanted to be able to do something that I felt I would enjoy through retirement, not be driven by the paycheck anymore. So I understand that the pay is significantly less for this position and I applied for it anyway intentionally. I'm hoping to be considered for at least what my predecessor was paid. Other than that, I expect no more than that. It's, it wouldn't be fair to expect a penny more. And I'm prepared to, to accept such an offer if that were to be entertained by the board.
Thank you very much, Audra. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the line of questioning coming from my fellow board members and, and I appreciate, Audra, your, your responses. So I'm, I'm going to take a different approach to this. Honestly, this interview is different in the fact that we know you. You work, you work for us. So I've got an insight that you normally wouldn't have. And so I, I'm one that don't usually tap dance around the issue. They said that the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So I want to get straight to the point. Here's what I want to say. While that, what I've known about you as CFO, you, your work ethic and the quality of your work, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Are you perfect? No, you're just like me. You're not perfect, but you're good. Okay, that's, that's just my, my feelings. I do know that the candidates for these jobs, it seems as if they're scarce and they're few and far in between for whatever reason. I know that you carry quite a workload with what you were doing as CFO. I know that you were understaffed. And even with that, I think sometime last year, you won some type of, your department got some prestigious award. I forgot exactly what it was. I was so moved by that, I even had like an appreciation as a board member for you and your department because I thought you did a phenomenal job based on what you had to work with and what you were up against. So with regards to that, you know, based on what I know, I, I, I hope that you, when this is over with, that you would be offered the job and that you wouldn't turn it down. Because sometimes people interview for a job and then at the end, they, they disappoint the people by saying, no, I don't want it. But that's, that's certainly your choice. Now, I know that, again, there, there was some comment that I got about, I don't know, some, some concerns about your temperament or whatever. What I will say is that all of that has to be taken in perspective and you got to take all that with a grain of salt. What I will say is that a lot of times people in your position, and even us as board members, people will push you, okay, unfairly. And if we, if the human in us come out and strike back like we probably should, then we'll look at that as a bad person. And so that's the thing that I have to be mindful of because I'm one that usually believe in, you know, tit for tat. You swing at me, I swing back at you. But, you know, we've been called to a higher standard and so we can't operate like that. And that's a lesson that I've learned so well and I hope that I'm doing very good. People will provoke you is what I'm saying. So with that saying, and I had to address that because I did get a letter and, and while maybe sometime you may get pushed in a corner and, and may become a little short, just, just be, be mindful of the fact that, don't let people, you know, let your good be evil spoken of because folks are good at that sometimes. So with that, you know, like I said, it's a different perspective because I know your work, I know what you're done. So I'm not going to tap dance around the issue. I hope you take the job.
Thank you, sir. I think the pressure of CFO versus the pressures of internal auditor are drastically different. And although I'll be dealing with five bosses, I think the workload is drastically different and there are some specific projects that are going to be stressful, but the overall, and hence why I want to step back a bit, this, this is, this, I don't want the level of conflict. And as internal auditor, you don't typically create conflict. You're just there to report to the board. So my intention is not to be in the middle of any conflict, period.
And I was going to also say, I can only imagine, you know, you'll be in a different setting altogether and you'll be even bigger and better. So yes, I agree with that 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And we're not, we're not actually voting on anything right. This is just the workshop, so we'll be talking about this in our next one, just so, just so you know. Ms. Roberts?
Oh, thank you. Okay, so I have several things. So I'd like you to speak to processes. So, so this is what I'm looking at. Processes that regarding like, say, historical benchmarking and then looking for efficiencies, comparisons of like-minded districts or like-sized districts, those type of things. Because as you know, one of the things with the challenging financial situation that we're in is that we have to find some financial slack. And that's really the only place you, that we, in my mind, that we can get it. And I think that the challenge with, with the historical benchmarking is going to be the different systems that we've used over the last so many years, is getting that data from the district itself. And then, but then the information because of the red book and because of the reporting system at a Tallahassee. But I'd just like you to speak to what that looks like for you, what you think that would entail, what you think that would, your experience with that type of thing along that.
Okay. One of the areas that over the years I've had to look at from that perspective is staffing ratios. Staffing ratios, whether it be paras in a school, whether it be health professionals, whether it be administrators, whether it be accounting personnel, HR personnel. As long as you have good contacts in other school districts or the information's readily available on DOE, just plain old staff counts, that kind of thing, it makes it a lot easier to analyze. But you have to have good data to analyze from. I found that in making those comparisons, sometimes like-sized districts that you would want to compare yourself to may not be the ones who had the data available. Sometimes it was somebody bigger, sometimes it was somebody smaller. And different districts did things different ways. But we would look at that from a staffing perspective. Often, we looked at it from a, an amount of instructional materials in particular courses spent, for example, was another area that got looked at at one point. We also looked at, you know, repairs and maintenance in different schools and, and what the focuses were. And those we had to look at in a different way, like with ages of buildings versus not, you know, newer buildings had less maintenance, obviously, just due to sheer age. And certain things had to be done in all of them. Sometimes it was materials, you know, whether this, this school had VCT flooring, this one had some kind of poured enamel, this one had something else. They all affected all those different ratios. So you have to just be open-minded to take all those things into consideration and try to figure out what the comparison should be and how those things can be looked at. So I'm open to, I love analysis. So, you know, that's, that's the fun part of any job is getting to dive into the details and figure out what, what the comparisons can be. And then you figure out what's valid, what people want to know about those. So I would look forward to something like that. And Lee, I know you're a detail lady, so I'm sure you'd have lots of suggestions and, and areas you'd want to see looked at.
Okay, so I have a second question. The second question, you know, typically with government-funded entities, taxpayer-funded entities or things where you kind of know where your money's coming from, even though you might not know the size of it, you might not know the restrictions that are put on it. But it's typical that there's an accountability issue. That's, that's pretty typical across the board. And that's been throughout time, it's been that way. So I am, from a board perspective, I am sensitive to things that the board may have as an initiative. So let's say, for instance, the board has an initiative that they're looking at right now that has to do, say, with robotics, all right? And I, I think I'm looking to the internal auditor position then of being able to take care of the tracking and accountability, whether it's setting some performance measures, whether it's keeping track of, of something and doing some rather intermittent reporting that is saying that either this is working, this isn't working, this is a good return on your money, it's not a good return on your money, that type of thing. Is that something that you have experience with, that you feel comfortable with, that you?
I like to think that I'm really creative in figuring out ways to track those things. With a new system such as Skyward, for example, we have unused components of our account strings right now. And I'm in the middle of a project right now with Title I. And this is similar to what you're talking about, Lee. They have set aside requirements. And we, as a district, have never tracked those set aside requirements and how we perform against those from a dollar standpoint nor a number of kids, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm implementing currently, right in the middle of it, I have a, a meeting on Thursday as a matter of fact, with the Title I folks. We're putting this one segment of the account string in place so that we can see what's being spent on those set asides so that we can better get a feel for, are we meeting the guides of, of what Title I wants us to accomplish? Whether, you know, it's, it's the mental health component or something else, whatever the set asides are, professional development, et cetera, we, we hopefully will track that as a program within something that's already there. We have some ability and, and I like to think, because I was in on the ground floor of helping you implement Skyward, that maybe I would have suggestions for my replacement and others in the future to help them get to a higher level of detail and have some details there. As long as you're tracking, you can always have too much detail, but if you don't put them, put something in place to capture, you'll never, later you'll never have enough and there's no way to get it back. So sometimes it's better to have too much detail than not enough. And then tying those things with your BI system, I haven't been involved in that, that would be something I would welcome learning. You're going to need to be able to track that against your BI system and all the student data. And who's taking those courses, that robotics, or who's participating in a club activity? And, and get that kind of data which is not in your financial system. So you have to figure out a way to tie those things together. I believe I'm created enough, creative enough with cooperation and assistance from other team members here at the district that we could potentially do that kind of thing.
Okay, and the last question I have has to do with timing. As we're getting ready, you know, we're, right now, we would normally be working on budget workshops. We would have TRIM coming up, et cetera. So what are you looking at as far as, have you discussed it with the superintendent? Or what does timing look like as far as this position goes?
We haven't discussed it. You know, this was supposed to happen a month ago, two months ago, and we had hoped that, that the hiring process could proceed to have your new CFO in place if, if we went forward with the COVID. It delayed everything, obviously. So I'm, I'm imagining that you need to, if, if I were to be offered this position, you would need to get that position hired as quickly as possible. And I'm going to have to pull some double duty to make sure both happen for a short, I, hopefully not for an extended period of time. I mean, I've heard discussion about this shouldn't happen until you have a new superintendent next November. Well, I, that's just too long to keep doing what I'm doing and that's why I applied for this position to begin with. So I would hope that we could come to some sort of a, a way to share my time, accomplish what you need. We still have one more year with MSL doing the internal accounts audit. So, because we signed up for two years with them. So they'll take care of that. I still have to prep for it, but they take care of it. That would enable me hopefully to work with whomever the board and superintendent hire for CFO so that I could help them finish the budget process at minimum. And as you know, we hired a new accounting manager who I will be training to do the AFR and CAFR. So I think I can keep my fingers on that and, and try to handle that until your CFO is up and running. I'm just hoping that you would accelerate the process to get that advertisement in place and, and get that person hired so that I could do that. I don't want to do this long-term. I really want to move into the one or the other. Doing both is literally killing me.
Right. But, but I would consider, I would think that from a organizational standpoint, to if you were somehow amenable to staying in your current role to get us through the budget process and to get us through TRIM, that knowing that it takes a period of time to get somebody new hired, you know, we kind of know what life looks like with you. We kind of understand the numbers that you give us, the manner in which we're getting things. So doing that transition piece in the middle of, you know, somebody new coming on and doing that transition at the same time that we're doing TRIM, we're doing a budget, et cetera, we're doing a capital we're doing a capital budget, we're doing an operating budget, I think could be problematic, especially if we continue with these Zoom-type meetings or, or this type of distance kind of communication, where I think that would be a problem. But so in my mind, in my mind, that would be a perfect world, is if we could get through those two hurdles, knowing that then you would transition over. Is that something that you would be amenable to, or is that something?
To a certain extent. I already am in the process of developing your budget. I will obviously continue in that process. I'm getting ready to do the staffing, the, the valuation of the staffing allocations. My crew is working on the, the operating allocations. We have a lot of unknowns, as you know. And we don't know what we're facing for cuts, but they could be unbelievably drastic. So I'll do my best. It's just that, the, the reason I applied for this, Lee, is because I can't keep doing both, and I'm letting one or the other slide all the time, trying to accomplish both. So at some point, we have to cut it off and move forward. As long as the, as long as you're, the board is, you know, going to go ahead and get the CFO position advertised and be pursuing finding a replacement, I will continue doing what I have to do to make this all work.
Thank you. That's all I have, thanks. Thanks, Audrey, I appreciate everything you've done for us.
So I just have a couple of questions, or, you know, kind of, kind of questions, but scenarios. So the internal audit position really typically works alone. And I really, I, I feel that it is, it's hard for the internal auditor to have relationships because you're auditing people, and the results could be not favorable. And including, because you are gonna be, would be the eyes and the ears of the board, how do you feel about that? And with the superintendent, current or, and, you know, when we have a new superintendent, what that looks like, how you feel about that, how do you handle that?
I was an auditor for almost five years, I have no problem with that. You know, the auditor is, is always that necess, like I teased about our accounting people being necessary evils. The internal auditor is more of a necessary evil. There's got to be someone keeping tabs on various things. You have to maintain a higher level of professionalism, a higher level of skepticism than everybody else, and you don't have a lot of close relationships. So you just adapt to that. You're, you're professional and friendly with all, but always maintain that skepticism. It doesn't bother me, I have no problem working alone. And so I actually, that's silly, but I actually look forward to not having quite as many reports. So, you know, the fact that I won't have reports doesn't bother me at all. The fact that it's my, I'm responsible for my own destiny for once and not everybody else's is actually a good thing to me.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question, we, as you know, we went through, we just went through the audit review process for our audit, and there were some, some issues. Can you just explain to us how you, how you address that? What, what things do you put in place when there are findings or issues? How do you deal with staffing and putting into place policies, procedures for your own staff? But in this case, it would be for staff that don't directly report to you or making those recommendations to the board on changes that need to be made? So those things don't happen in the future?
Understood. So I have a different philosophy about audit, and maybe it's because I've been on both sides. But I believe that audits and audit findings should be tools to improve, not punitive, things to punish people with or to hold over their heads. And unless it's severe and serious, and you have to take some kind of disciplinary action, those are mistakes, mistakes that now need to be prevented in the future. So you think of, hopefully, creative ways to make them not happen again. And, you know, in a district this size where there's limited staff, mistakes can be made. So you try to put in mitigating controls so it doesn't, doesn't happen again. Try to have double sets of eyes on things. Try to have reviews in place so that somebody is looking over the transactions that others are doing so that there's always a double check. That, that is sometimes what we miss here. I have to say that I feel like in certain areas, you know, someone might say, well, that's finances problem, or, oh, that's HR's problem. No, it's everybody's problem. All these issues need to be looked at as a team. And, you know, as internal auditor, I will be outside the team. But I hope to maybe coach and pull people together so that they can correct the things that we need to correct as a whole. And again, I don't think any of this should be punitive. I don't think it should be viewed as somebody did something wrong, but how can we do better and not do it again in the future? Sometimes there's just too much for a small staff. And sometimes you just have to help them along to make it better for the next time something comes along. And then with my own staff, that's what I've done. I've been training up people, and I'm sure Tony can attest to this because my staff have talked to him, certain ones. There are, there's an opportunity for everybody to learn more and do more, every single day. And some people welcome it, and some people do not. But those that do welcome it are becoming more and more consummate professionals. They're, they're getting better and better at their jobs every day, and that benefits the school district. And that's what I've tried to do here in finance. I think I've been pretty successful at that with the staff that came with the department when I came aboard. I've got people doing things they've never done before, and they like it. And some of them don't like it, but they're getting things done, and we're getting a lot accomplished all the time. And I hope I can continue that, whether it's internal accounts out in the schools and teaching bookkeepers and secretaries things they didn't know. Doesn't really matter who, but it shouldn't be punitive. It just should be, how can we make sure we learn from this and don't do it again? Do it better.
I happen to agree with you on, on an organization, we get audited quite a bit as well. And I think they should be learning opportunities. And like you said, unless it's something major, that there's something egregious happening, I think that it's, it's an opportunity for us to do better and be better year after year. So with that, I have, I don't have any additional questions.
Mrs. Powers, I have one other question, may I ask that?
Sure.
Okay. In looking at your application and your resume, Audrey, I see that you have background in terms of construction, in terms of looking at construction budgets and things. So how, how can you help us? Because I know we're gonna be looking at building two schools. What, you're, you're gonna have talent in that area, how does that help us? And how do you bring that talent to the table?
Before, before my predecessor left, we were talking about hiring outside firms to do construction auditing, to audit those pay apps. I'm hoping that that could be an internal project. I know what the RFPs and, and the contracts are gonna say. I know pretty much how to audit for those things and work with the construction manager, Garrett, Mark, in facilities to make sure things are done in compliance with those contracts and what's expected. So I'm hoping that maybe we can avoid going outside on some of those. You got two schools going on at the same time with two, you know, construction managers at risk and two main pay apps coming in. And if we do those as they're coming in and, and keep tabs on them and watch for the progress, making sure that the progress is what we anticipate based on those pay apps and the sign-offs by the, by the architects and engineers on each pay app, maybe we can stave off any problems. Make sure things are coming in as planned, that there aren't significant change orders, those types of things. That's what we would have had to have an outside firm audit. And I'm hoping that maybe I can help do that without going to the outside firm. Or if we do have to go to an outside firm just because of sheer volume, at least I will have the ability to pull together the right data for them to make it an easier job for an outside firm to do, should I need assistance. I can't guarantee I can do it all, but knowing what I know, I think I can definitely help.
Yeah, it sounds like you can. Thank you very much, Audrey, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, thank you all. Unless there are any additional questions, I think that's it. And we really appreciate you taking the time today, Audrey. And we will be discussing this at our special meeting immediately following. So thank you very much.
I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Audrey.
And with that, is there any other comments from the board before we adjourn the workshop? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Marcia?
Marcia?
Yes?
We have a member of the public that came and would like to address the board. Would he be able to do so at this time?
Yeah, if, I have no problem with that, as long as, um, it's, does he, do they want to do it at this meeting or the next one? It's totally up to the member of the public, I have no problem. We did kind of just adjourn it, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna rescind my adjourn, my adjournment of the meeting. And we can take the public comment, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yes, he's, he's here now, because the next meeting does not begin till 5:00 PM.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, not that it matters.
Good afternoon. I just have a few brief comments. My son Ryan is a seventh-
Sir, would you please state your name for the record so that they can hear it?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Peter Mussonden, M U double S E N D.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
As I started to say, my son Ryan is a, he's at Addison Middle School. He's a seventh grader and doing exceptionally well. Now, I'm gonna be very brief. What would we attribute that to? And I'll tell you what we attribute it to. My wife and I, who teaches in the school system, we stay on top of all of his work. But most importantly, Principal Tim Akins is an outstanding leader, students and staff. Now, Ryan has been there for a couple of years. But we have known Tim since he was the principal of Crystal Lake Elementary School. And we saw how he dealt with not only the students, but the staff that worked for him. And we just consider him to be an outstanding principal. His, his leadership has allowed our son to do exceptionally well. And his leadership will allow many of the kids of Addison Middle School to soar like eagles. Now, I just wanna say this. Please work with him so he can work with staff who can align themselves with his way of doing things so that all of our kids can continue to soar. He's outstanding. I mean, if, I'm not going to school anymore. Look, I look like a middle school student, but I'm not. I'm Ryan's dad, and he is, he's, the leadership of Tim Akins and his people, like I said, from Crystal Lake to Addison Middle School, has been outstanding. I wouldn't take any more of your time, but I, I hope and pray that this board will allow him to be instrumental in choosing his assistant principal.
Thank you very-
And I thank you very, very much.
Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. So that will conclude our workshop. We will reconvene at 5:00, so you all have about a 15-minute break. And we'll be, we'll be back here at 5:00. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get started. We'll call this a special meeting of the school board to order. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda. Michael Dietrich-Lee.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Dietrich-Lee, a second by Ms. Stephanthaler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any dissenting? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so approval of the appointed superintendent brochure, item 2.01. Any questions, issues?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Roberts?
So I believe you have two copies, because when I talked to Jennifer, one of the things that we had, it's on the page that, it would be page two. One copy has a seventh bullet that says the district was recognized as one of 11 school districts. So I didn't want to add something without everybody's permission, so I had Jennifer figure out what that would look like with it. So that's why you have two different copies?
So I have no problem with that being added. So I guess our motion would be to approve the bifold two, which is in the, unless somebody else has any questions about it?
No, I'm fine with that.
It would be bifold two. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the brochure labeled bifold two that has the extra bullet about the district was recognized as one of 11 school districts.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Stephanthaler, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Approval of appointed superintendent citizens advisory committee rules of procedure. Questions, Ms. Roberts?
So I went through and, and I sent one to Andrea and the consultants, but I didn't send it all the way out to everybody, and plus my compute, my other computer's doing something weird. But I reworked some of those paragraphs and took out the language that had to do with members conducting research, collecting pertinent information, and that type of thing. So Andrea, can you share, do you know?
When you asked me to share, do you mean share the document that you sent to me?
Yeah, the revision one document that I sent to you.
Yes, I believe I can. Let me just see if I can present on this. I know I could in somebody else's meeting earlier today, let me just see.
Down at the bottom, you can share the screen.
Yep.
So this mainly has to do with paragraph five, the meetings and procedures language?
Okay. Trying to get the right screen shared for you guys. And I think is, can, are you able to see it right now?
Yes, that's the one.
All right, let me enlarge it slightly to fill up the screen.
So what I did was, the things that are underlined and bold are the things that I added, and the things that are struck through are the things that I took out. So for example, in the first paragraph, I added a sentence about the meetings would be attended and facilitated by one or more representatives, et cetera, who are retained as our consultants.
Okay.
The second paragraph, instead of talking about, "Members will each conduct research on candidates and perform outreach to professional peers on one or more top candidates, collect pertinent information on those candidates, and be prepared to identify qualified candidates." I use the language mostly that came from the document that FSBA gave us at the last meeting, the two pages that you gave us, and said that they're expected to evaluate the resumes of all applicants based on the school board's identified qualities and qualifications and prepared to identify qualified candidates unranked approximately 15 to 20, recognize that the number 15 to 20 is approximately, and that these numbers may vary. Additionally, it's not a requirement that each member identify exactly the requested number of candidates. Then paragraph three, took out the language about members presenting results of their research and changed that to identify each member identifying, back to the FSBA's language, each member identifying their top qualified candidate selection, then tabulating to determine a list of 15 to 20, knowing then that the committee would then be try, each committee member would then be going through that 15 or 20 and identifying eight to 10. And then the third paragraph, or fourth paragraph, at the final meeting, each committee member would identify from that shortened list of the 15 to 20, you know, the, the combined list, to identify eight to 10 qualified applicants. And then they'll determine which eight to 10 they want to submit to the school board. And then saying that the school board, that that information would be transmitted by each school board, to each school board member at the conclusion of that meeting. I know that there was an issue, I don't remember what county it was, it was somewhere up the coast, north of us, where it was, board members were reading about it in the paper, you know, because they didn't go to the committee advisory or citizens advisory committee. And they were reading about it in the paper- And they were reading about it in the paper and the community was all knew about everything before the board members did. So that was kind of-
If I can say something about that, Kristia or Lee? It wasn't actually that it was in the newspaper. It was that a member of the community advisory committee was putting it out on social media during the meeting. And that was what the problem was. So one of the things that we have changed is that in our orientation, we remind the committee members that this is a committee that reports to the board and that we appreciate them not putting things out on social media until information is shared with the board because they, they report to the board, not to the community like you all do, but it was a social media issue.
Okay. I can imagine in our community, we're going to have our press sitting in the back of the room and it will be, it will be on Facebook as it happens, and then it will be in the newspaper the next day.
Yeah.
And yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Now, so Andrea and do you guys have any issues, questions, problems with the language as it was added? You know, I just, I really, my, my big thing is that, I mean, I don't have, I don't have any real issue with the language. I just want it to be very clear what, you know, and I think that it is clear without all, we could make this agreement in my mind super simple, but just managing expectations of what this committee is, is tasked with doing is the key thing for me. So all the other stuff is just extra. So I don't have a problem with it, but if you see any pitfalls or things that we, that you would have an issue with, if you could just share that with us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. First off, you'll notice that this, and you'll see the highlighted language there is revision one. There were some things that Lee had put in here originally. I called her and told her I thought she needed to think through something a little differently and gave her some context. So she actually has, uh, this is not the first version that she worked through, so she and I have worked through it together so that we are okay with all this language and we think that this is fine. We just, to your point, the, the expectations being clear, especially when we physically can't be there to pull everyone together as quickly as we might want is one of the reasons that John and I have prepared and are prepared to do a virtual orientation training for the members. So right from the start, we can get them together virtually, talk about the expectations. We have a whole agenda. It's about a 45-minute session long before they even begin to get any other resumes or anything. So the expectations will be clear right from the start, plus they'll get copies of this, so I think it will be clear.
Okay, good.
Marsha, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I can't see it, but did you take out the language where it said that members will each conduct research on candidates and perform outreach to professional peers on one or more of the top candidates? And collect, okay, you took that out.
Well, Lee did, yes.
So I have a concern about that. And maybe you've covered it someplace else, Lee. I can't really read this the way it is right now and kind of take it in and then look at it and, you know, analyze it, but I would, I guess my concern is, is that I really want to know how the candidates have performed in their other districts, not through just resumes, but really some really, because we can't fly there necessarily if they're out of state, so on and so forth, but it's, it's not always just the people that give them recommendations that, that that information's important. It's actually how they work in the community and, and how they interact with people that may not have anything to do necessarily with the interview process. So I guess my concern is, is I, I just want as much done as possible to know these candidates inside and out so that we have all of the information that we need to make the right decision because people can look really great on paper, people can get high recommendations, but that does not necessarily mean that the majority of people feel a certain way. So, does that make sense?
It does make sense and I, and I will share a few thoughts on that. First off, John, Bill and I all reach out to people, not just those that are listed as references, as you correctly noted, those are not, in fact, those are the least helpful in my opinion. It's very, very helpful for me to reach out to my colleagues in other states, just like I know every superintendent in Florida and most of the assistant superintendents in Florida. So too do my peers in other states. So I'm able to pick up the phone if it's somebody from Oklahoma, call my good friend over there and say, hey, talk to me about this particular candidate. What do you know? And if he doesn't know, one of his staff members may know because they may have worked with the people in some sort of training or something like that. So there are ways for me to get through my connections. One of the things that you'll find if I reach out to the, let's just say economic development people, they don't know me, so they'll give me information, but it may be slightly guarded because they, they don't know me and already have a trust level with me. However, your economic development person or your chamber person reaching out to their peers is what we sometimes find gathers that information. That's why we had this in there to begin with, but we also understand the concerns with it. It goes both ways. So it may be that, that we specifically identify some people that we want to reach out to their community peers and, and ask them, and it could be economic development, Chamber of Commerce, whatever we identify. John, Bill, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, I'm not sure what, Ms. Roberts, what was the concern about taking that out? Because in the past, the committee members have thought that was a primary job responsibility. So what, what was your concern about taking that out?
So my concern was, one was fidelity. So, you know, whether you're assigning people, whether you're, you know, here's candidates, you take one through five, I'll take these, et cetera. And my method of reaching out, questioning, doing, conducting research, et cetera, may be different than your method. You know, the, the questions I may ask, the depth by which I may do something. Then my second concern had to do with the candidates themselves getting an overwhelming number of people calling them. You know, I mean, obviously each board member is going to be doing their own research at some point in time, too. So that was the second thing. And then the third thing is expectations. So that, so that when you're, you know, so that we're, we've identified what qualities and qualifications we're looking for. That's been identified. That's been spelt out by forums, by the questionnaires, by all of those documents and by everything that we've done. We perfected that list, we've refined that list. It's down to 20 items. This is really what we're looking for. My concern is that as we have very involved and very invested committee members who would be in this process, that they become a champion for one or more persons. And they become, it's like, this is my number one, this is who it should be, and they become the advocate for that candidate. And it, and life takes on a different direction. That's my concerns.
Just basically on the experience, we, we ask that the people on the committee not actually call the people that apply. So that, and we, as far as I know, that, that may have happened once, but I, I don't think, I don't really even know if that has ever happened. Second, my concern would be, I just have, the committees have, everyone, as you're saying, does, has their own way of checking. But that I think has been a strength. Because as Andrea's saying, then those, the people feel comfortable with calling someone who has their same similar job responsibility in the district, and it's worked out really well. I, I'm concerned about restricting their work to just a paper review.
So I, I wasn't, so Bill, I wasn't concerned with if they wanted to reach out and if that's what they wanted to do. But language that was saying members will each conduct research on candidates. Where was the next one? It, it was that, it's that blue sentence that somebody has highlighted. Is that you, Andrea, that have that highlighted?
Yes.
Members will conduct research on candidates. I mean, I, I think it was-
Should we change it to may?
Well, let me ask a question still, okay? Because again, I don't want to be too restrictive. I think informal conversations sometimes give you more information than formal questions do, especially if you're going peer to, talking peer to peer. So I don't know how, I mean, they've used this before, it sounds like. They've probably worked in districts with parents who are quite as involved as our parents are or our, our community members are. So I mean, I would like to ask the experts who've done this before, does that one word need to be changed or can we give them that opportunity? Because again, the more information you have, the better, and sometimes the less informal, the less formal you're doing it, the more information you will, you will attain that will give you background, experience, knowledge, but also how those people interact and, and what their code of conduct, so to speak, is, or ethics and so on and so forth.
I, I agree with you, and that's why, and the other thing that, that I heard, which we don't recommend, is that we divide up the candidates and have one person do this five and one person do the other.
We don't do that.
Open that up. We don't recommend that at all. We, you're, what you're describing, the informal process has really worked very well in the past. My only concern is I don't want to restrict them from, to only doing a paper review of what data they have in front of them because the, just like you're saying, Ms. Roberts said, the qualities are very important and they have ways, the people on this committee have ways of calling people to, to identify if those qualities are actually in, in that person's way of work.
Yes.
Let me ask this, if we, if this language would be acceptable to everybody, what if the, the sentence is now in yellow? What if it said, members may each conduct informal research on candidates and perform outreach to professional peers? So it'll say, members may each conduct informal. Is that something everyone can live with?
I'm fine with that.
So say it again, Andrea?
Members may, and I'm typing it on another document because I don't, I don't, you, you sent me a PDF. Members may each conduct informal research on candidates, blah, blah, blah.
What do you mean by informal?
So it's not the expectation that they're going to be checking a box, like, like Mrs. Stephanthaler said. Sometimes the most important conversations are the pick up the phone and talk about something as opposed to a formal checklist that they're going to ask the exact wording of something, in informal conversation. But if informal's a problem, then we can work on that. I'm just trying to find something here that bridges
So are you, are you assuming they're gonna, they, they could possibly call the candidate?
No, we, we ask them not to.
Good, okay.
Well, and, and, I'm sorry, Mike, where are you done?
Go ahead, Marsha.
Okay, I apologize. So I, I kind of look at it like I would want if they work for a, or if they're just in the community and from, from here and they're in the Kiwanis Club and they know somebody who lives in the community where they are, to say, hey, we're, we're hiring a new superintendent in our county. This is the candidate, you know, what do you guys think? Kind of thing. That's how I envision it.
Yes.
Not that they're going to call and ask, scrutinize. That's up to us as board members to, I think, you know, get in a little more in-depth about really detailed things. It's just to kind of get a feel for what, off the record, for what the community thinks.
I agree.
But I do, I do have some concerns about them, you know, what if, what if they outcome, what if the, they have a phone call with someone and it's not good and they share that information publicly? I want them to be very careful about that because we don't want to come across as being damaging to anyone that's going to now be part of the public record and I, I just want to be very careful that they take this role seriously and that they, I don't want them to be jeopardized in any way by disparaging anyone publicly if it's not a good thing.
John, I'll let you answer that.
Madam Chair, just a couple of issues. I think in, in my experiences with these committees and, and I kind of spent a lot of time with them because I have some interaction with them beforehand and submitting resumes to them in, in advance in some cases, as the board may direct. But let's say if there are 40 people that apply, some of these committee members will look at the qualifications and qualities and that have been set by the board of Martin County. And they will look for certain things and they may from a resume see a candidate that maybe is even a sitting superintendent that may be in a, in a school district, one of the smaller districts up north with only 800 students. And that committee member may say, I think we're, I'm looking for someone that's going to be experienced in a comparable sized district. That can, that committee member may elect not to do any, any checks on that person because they've only been a superintendent for one year. They're coming from a district with only 800 students. And they may kind of put that to the, the pile on the left. So I don't think that every committee member will, will, will do an, in a in-depth search and research on every candidate because they're kind of starting from square one with the qualities and characteristics that the board has set in Martin. So, and, and I think people that come in and try to really push a candidate, when you have a committee of 25 people and the process that we use kind of doing a tally sheet for every candidate to bring up their top, every committee member to bring up their top candidates, it really flows well and after the first kind of round of say identifying some top candidates, there will be a solid 12 to 15 candidates that 85 to 90% of your committee is going to say, these are kind of our top folks. So it's, it's really difficult, even though there may be persons to push a certain candidate. I, I personally, in, in my experiences, have not seen that really, that one person or two people, you know, take over a committee because I, I really think that these committee members are professionals. They do take their job seriously. They spend a lot of time. They ask me a lot of questions. And it really is something that they're, they're just as committed to a certain group of eight or 10 candidates as, as anyone else. So I just, it certainly is not an expectation that every committee member call and do a, a search for every candidate because some of these committee members are going to put some people over to the side initially.
And also, Madam Chair, if I may, the, the, we start off discussing with the committee members and, and we actually try to remind the school board of this as well. These people are exposing themselves by putting their applications into a public process. And they all are, have, have high levels of achievement in their field. What we're looking for are those that rise above and those that particularly are appealing. And so we're, our goal, we remind them we're not intending to disparage anyone. We're just trying to find those that sort of may have additional characteristics that make them more appealing to you. And, and I'll tell you, when even the board gets between the semifinalists and the finalists, or even when the board is discussing the final candidates. I mean, we had, just this year in Volusia, top three candidates, any one of whom could have easily gotten that job. And it's difficult for the board to even have the conversation because they don't want to disparage any one of the finalists, but they need to indicate that this one had something that was slightly better. So it really is part of our job to facilitate the conversation towards the strengths and towards the positives so that those are the things that we focus on.
Perfect. Thank you. So unless there's any other discussion, I, I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the changes in the, in the addition that Andrea made. Is there any more-
Lee has her hand up, Marsha. Lee has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see you, Lee. Sorry about that.
So, so can we have a sentence that says, members are permitted in, after that requested number of candidates? Members are permitted to conduct informal research on candidates and slash- and/or reach out to professional peers."
Read it one more time.
"Members are permitted to conduct informal research on candidates and/or reach out to professional peers." Does that sound okay?
I'm okay with that.
That's okay with me.
That's fine with me.
Okay, then that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, do I have a motion to approve it with the changes that we just talked about?
So moved.
So, a second.
I have a motion by Mr. DiTrilezi, a second by Mrs. Stephanthaler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, perfect. So, we're moving on to item 2.03. Just as, out of an abundance of caution, because this does involve early learning, I'm going to recuse myself at the advice of our attorney. So, I don't think that it's anything involving PPK or the Early Learning Coalition, but I think I should, you know, I don't think it's my, recusing myself is not going to change the outcome of the vote, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, before we continue on and do these other things, and before our consultants leave, I know one of the things that has been transmitted to all the board members is the advisory committee recommendations. And I don't see that on the agenda. So, are they, Bill, are you all staying through three? Through the informational items? Andrea? You're sticking around, right?
Yeah, I just was muting myself during this conversation.
I just didn't, I'm sorry, Marcia. I just didn't want them to all disappear and then us to be.
No, I had one other update. John was going to go through the timeline also, just to make sure we're all up to speed.
So, we'll get through these other things and then come to that. Thank you. Sorry, Marcia.
No worries. Thank you. Jennifer, did you have anything that you wanted to say? Or, we're good? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve item 2.03?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Stephanthaler, a second by Mr. DiTrilezi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, with me dissenting, or not dissenting, recusing. Item 2.04, Jensen Beach High School partial roof replacement. This is the warranty work being done by Morganti and the problems that they were having with the roof. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve it? Item 2.05?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it if you include 2.04 in that, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say 2.05? So, it's, we can approve both of those at the same time if you amend your motion, Mr. DiTrilezi?
So be it.
2.04 and 2.05. Do I have a second by Ms. Roberts?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 2.06?
Move approval. Lee?
Second.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Mr. DiTrilezi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we, what do you guys want to do? We, well, we'll go ahead with the, with the internal auditor. We interviewed a candidate for our internal audit position at our workshop. And now, I guess I would be looking for a motion from the Board and any discussion that we want to have about, about the candidate, the position. Ms. Roberts?
Did you see me? Oh, good, thanks.
I see you now because the, when it's, when you share the screen, I only see a few people.
Okay. So, I would like, I think HR would handle whatever those negotiations are, but I would like to, that to be a discussion that includes a superintendent that deals with both the budget and the trim.
Okay. So, I guess we would be looking for a timeline, too, of what that's going to look like. You know, I don't know what the motion is going to be yet, but.
Are you looking for a motion to move forward with hiring Audra or offering the position of internal auditor to Audra? Where that HR would work out and working out some recommendation with the superintendent that has to do with this year's budget and trim?
Yes, and we would also need to approve the salary, what that is going to be because there is a range. How are we going, where are we going to start this? And that's it. So, if you have.
Doesn't that normally come to us from HR after they do? I'm asking the superintendent this. Isn't that correct, Madam Superintendent? That that, even though it's a range, that HR knows how to handle that and?
Right. I'd be happy to provide the information about the range, where that falls within our schedule.
So, so really, that should, so if we approve, if we, Ms. Roberts, if that's going to be your motion, then I guess all the final details will come back to us in May. We would make that offer with the contingency that the superintendent will work out a timeline, make a recommendation to the Board on what that starting salary should be, and then bring forward the contract because typically, we, you know, we'll need to see the contract and approve that at our next board meeting. So.
That's my motion.
Okay, great.
So, I second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Stephanthaler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Appointed superintendent job description, that was an informational item. While we have everybody here, any questions for FSBA on that? Any comments from John or Bill or Andrea on that item?
John?
No, ma'am. We had, we had seen it earlier and it looks great. And it did have the one correction from the last meeting, I think, just a capital letter.
Okay, perfect. And then you wanted, John, you wanted to go over, or I don't, I can't remember, John or Bill wanted to go over the revised timeline?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just thought it would be appropriate. At our April 21st meeting, if you recall, the Board made several slight adjustments to the timeline. And I just wanted to review that real quick to make sure that we're all on the same page. The first thing, of course, we added today's meeting, May 5th. And then, our advertisement posting period was scheduled for May 1st, and that was changed based on Board discussion to May 15th. We added another regular Board meeting on May the 19th just to kind of give an update and address any pending items that may be needed to be addressed at that time. The other change was, we had the advertisement closing on June the 30th. Based on your input, we did adjust that to now reflect July the 15th of 2020 is when the advertisements close. And we changed our Citizens Advisory Committee meetings somewhat. Our first committee meeting will be July the 23rd. Our second meeting would be July the 30th. And then, if needed, the final meeting would be on August the 6th. And that was from the input that the Board provided at our April 21st meeting. Those were really the only adjustments to the previous timeline. And those changes I did submit to Ms. Falls for her to have placed up on your superintendent search website.
Perfect. Are there any questions from the Board, Ms. Roberts? Unmute yourself.
Again, so the same way that we added May 19th in there, John?
Yes, ma'am.
If we could also add July 21st in there? July 21st is another regular Board meeting that we have?
We can do that.
Yeah, we just, we, at the last meeting, we kind of agreed that every single meeting we have between now and when we make our final decision, we would like that as an item. And if we happen to have something, great. If we don't, we won't talk about it, but just in case.
Okay, Madam Chair, then what I'll do, I will follow up with Diane tomorrow and make sure I have all of those meetings in the correct times. I will then update this timeline and submit it back to Diane for her to post on the website as well.
Thanks, Dr.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I could, Madam Chair, just a quick update from Dr. Vogel on the advertisements. I think he's kind of getting ready and geared up to be ready to post those as we open that up on May the 15th. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. We've discussed this, but I've talked to Mrs. Falls. And on the 15th, which is the first day of the opening, we'll be advertising with Ed Week under the Top School Jobs website, the American Association of School Administrators. And that goes to all 5,000 members who are currently superintendents. We'll be advertising with the National Association of Black Administrators, the Florida Association of School Administrators, and the Association of Latinos Administrators and Superintendents. Those are the, those are the advertisements that do have a budget item, and we've talked about that in the past. We also send our notice to all of the state administrative associations, the Broad Center, and also, and Mrs. Messina, you may want to comment on where you send the advertisement out to also.
Certainly. I share the advertisement with the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which are our colleagues in other states, the superintendent, or excuse me, the school board associations that work with each of the states. And so, they distribute it on their websites, just as we distribute theirs on our website, as well as my personal colleagues, the executive directors, because they typically, like we, know who's out there looking for a job. They read the, they read the openings, see if they think they have someone that's a good fit. We also share it with what is considered a National Connection School District, which is an affiliate of the National School Boards Association, and the Cube, which is the Urban Boards of Education. So, we try to get as many cross-sections as we can, and all of those are free.
Madam Chair, if I could please, I forgot one item on the timeline. On June 23rd, the schedule has the school board approving the membership of the advisory committee. And what we would like to do, Mrs. Messina, is work with some districts to create a Sunshine Training video. So, if I could just have her speak a little about that because we would like to maybe try to wedge the Sunshine Training video in between the night that y'all appoint your advisory committee member formally up until their first meeting. Sometime in that window is to do a virtual Sunshine Training. Miss Messina?
Yes, thank, go ahead, Marcia.
So, and I guess we can talk about this, and just before you do that, after, after this, we could talk about our list of, we all submitted our names. And I think we are kind of going to fill in the blanks. And if the Board is okay with it, we could even move it to our regular board meeting on the 19th. If that works out better, that way you'll have a little more time to wedge in the virtual training. So, but we can talk about that when you tell us, give us the information.
Okay, so, one of the things that we always do with our Citizens Advisory Committee members is let them know that this type of a committee is under the Florida Sunshine Law and Public Records Laws requirements. It's a committee of the Board, and as such, the information, we have to advertise the meetings, take minutes, and they must maintain their records as well as comply with the Sunshine Law. You all know, after having been elected, that there are some nuances to the Sunshine Law that the average citizens are not aware of. So, we provide that training. Typically, we would have at a first meeting done an orientation and a Sunshine Law training. But since we're not sure what's going on with how many people can be in a room, that sort of thing, I, for both Sarasota and Escambia, I have recorded, in conjunction with their attorney, we together have taken a half an hour of time, recorded the Sunshine Law training, make it available to your website platform. So, your IT people will house it wherever your IT people house even these school board meetings. I think you guys house it through Board Docs, if I'm not mistaken. And then, we allow the Citizens Advisory Committee members to do that training at their own convenience. What I'd like to get from you is approval to work with your attorney on that. It'll take less than an hour's time, but I, I can do it myself or we can involve the attorney in it. It'll just involve a little bit of back and forth via email so that I share the PowerPoint that I've used with other attorneys. I'll send the links of the other attorney's recordings so Mr. George can see it. And then, he and I will work out a time where we meet, record it, and then I make it available to your IT folks.
Yeah, that would be great. I think Mr. George is on the call, so I'm, if you want to share that with him. I think that's really important. I think the more we can talk about Sunshine, the better. It's a super sensitive subject here in Martin County. So, I would really like to, for our committee members to really understand it. So, that's great.
Perfect. I'll reach out to you, Mr. George.
And then, Andrea, what do you, what do you think about the timeline? Do you want us to approve it? Approve our members at the May 19th meeting? Will that give you more time? Or is that date on the 23rd still okay?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Reichert on that.
Madam Chair, I really would prefer just keeping it on the 23rd because if we move it up to the 19th and the Board formally appoints this committee on that evening or that day, then they, at that point, become covered under the Sunshine and Public Records. So, sometimes the least amount of time is better. And that still gives us, based on the current timeline, a full month before we have our first meeting. And we certainly can do, you know, within that timeframe.
That makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Vogel?
Yes, Mrs. Messina. Do you all want to talk also about the orientation in addition to the Sunshine that you and John are planning to do for the committee?
Sure.
Bias training in that?
Sure. So, Mr. Reichert and I, Mr. Reichert would typically also go and do some orientation training with all of the Citizens Advisory Committee members. As with the Sunshine Law training, Mr. Reichert and I have created a webinar-based version. But, but for purposes of the orientation, we would actually prefer to do it live, similar to this, so that the Citizens Advisory Committee members can ask questions. The Sunshine Law piece, we record it so they can do it at their convenience. And then, they may have questions about the Sunshine, which we can answer during the orientation. So, it would follow up to that. But John and I would be doing the live presentation of the orientation training, which really would go through all of those expectations that we've already discussed, what the expected outcomes are, all of that. It's probably 45 minutes if we include some question-and-answer time. And we will, once, we know that you're looking at appointing them on the 23rd, so we'll get together with Diane and try to find a good time for both the Sunshine Law posting. That doesn't have to be a meeting date, but for the orientation meeting date, we'll also record it. So, if someone can't participate live, they can watch it after the fact. But the idea is that hopefully, most of them will be able to participate live and ask any questions that they have.
Just one comment, and Board members, I want to, just to say a thank you to Paul in your IT department. You know, certainly, nothing is better than face-to-face communication. But I think this is certainly an unprecedented situation. And we are working very closely with Paul and through FSBA to come up with, I think, innovative ways of carrying on our business in what we think may be just a new way of doing business. So, yeah, I think, you know, we have everything. We're really moving forward in that direction now. We're not letting anything slow us down right now.
Perfect. Thank you very much for letting us know that. Okay, so now, and do you all have anything else that you wanted to share with us regarding the search? So, I'm going to ask if there's any public in the room that would, or that would like to comment. I don't know if the superintendent is still there, if she, if there's any public. It doesn't appear to be any public?
There's no one here. There's no one here, Marcia.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, open to the board.
Mrs. Powers, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. It's about the superintendent search. So my question would be the approval of the appointed superintendent citizens advisory committee. I know we all submitted names, but really, there were only 19 names. And I know we submitted four each, or we were able to submit four each, which meant that we were going to come back and talk about the rest of the makeup. Is that going to be done at a different meeting?
Yeah, I think that was what Ms. Roberts, Ms. Roberts, I think that's what you were referring to earlier. I think Mr. Anderson only appointed, he only had three on his list. I don't know if that's something that, he might have his fourth person, but we had talked about the other five being, kind of filling in gaps of organizations that we would like represented on the committee, that type of thing.
Right. So is there?
Will we hear that tonight or not?
We can, we could talk about it. We can't really, I guess we can. It's not an action item, but we can, we can talk about that. And then we're going to approve it, not until June 23rd, so totally up to.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If you have certain organizations that you would like to see represented, or individuals, or whatever it is, how we want to fill those six positions, we can talk about suggestions for that.
Right. And the only reason I was bringing it up is because if we are going to ask other people, we do need to have time to ask them, so that they have time to decide whether they can attend those meetings. So I had a couple of, a few suggestions as far as organizations. Would you like me to say, present those now?
Oh, yes.
So I think we talked about last time, a representative from MCEA and a representative from ASME. I also think we may want to look at, and this is just suggestions, somebody from United Way and Boys and Girls Club, possibly. I do have, I gave my five, but I also have a parent that, you know, is more than willing, more than willing to work on the committee if we have an extra spot there. So those would be my suggestions at this point.
Okay. Are there any other suggestions? I was kind of thinking of, you know, I don't think we had anybody from a Chamber of Commerce. I feel like that's, whether it's the Council of Chambers would like to come together and have a representative. I think it would be important that the, you know, obviously, we have too many chambers to have one from every chamber. But if they came together as their EDs together and decided, one, that they would like to, because I think that one of our qualities is being embedded in the community. And as a Chamber of Commerce, if they would have that insight. So that was one of my suggestions.
That's a good idea. I like that idea, too. And also, I should have mentioned, because it's been mentioned to me, possibly someone from the faith-based community.
That's a good idea, too. Ms. Roberts?
So when I did mine, I tried to give you what organizations or affiliations they had. And I do think MCEA and ASME are important. I don't know whether, Marsha, is one of your people from Taxpayers Association?
Yes, yes. They could have. You know what? I think taxpayers, no, I don't think they are. One, my first one, she's from Indian Town, because I really think it's important to have a representative from Indian Town and also representing the Hispanic community. So, and then, what, yes, we do have a member of the Taxpayers Association, but they did not submit a formal name to us of someone. But I have someone in mind, if I had one more, that I would like to ask from the Taxpayers Association, who's, you know, been really, you know, a part of this process, but is also really invested in just government in general. So I would like to have the opportunity to possibly ask him to be a part of it. I think it would be key, and that would, you know. Mr. Dietrich-Leezy?
No, Ms. Roberts can finish. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the only other one I had was, I know that Maureen Wilt is with the Education Leadership Florida Group, or has gone through that Education Leadership Florida class, and she's Florida Power and Light's Education Program Manager. And I think, I haven't talked to her, because we were limited to four, but I think if she were interested, she would be a good person, too.
So what do you guys, Mr. Dietrich-Leezy?
Oh, one of my appointees is in the Chamber of Commerce, in case you're wondering. I do have a chamber, and a couple others that I noticed on the list. Ms. Roberts has one that's, I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Roberts has one that's a director on a committee, education committee at the chamber. There's probably a couple.
Yeah. I did, you know what? I wasn't even thinking about that. You're right. I know that that, okay.
That's okay. And I do have a not-for-profit on mine, so I feel comfortable with mine at least.
Marsha?
Yes?
Mr. Anderson just sent a text, and he can hear you, but he can't see you. And so you can't see him, so you don't forget that he's still out there.
Oh, yeah. Will you, can you unmute yourself, Mr. Anderson?
Hello?
I show him still muted on mine.
Oh, sorry. Cleared.
We're going to see if we can assist him to unmute.
So, Mrs. Powers, how many more are we looking at then? Because if we have, we have two, if we're going to do ASME and MCEA. And I think that Dr. Vogel said we could have up to 30 people. It didn't have to be 25. Is that correct, Dr. Vogel?
Yes, ma'am. If you run over 25, we'd be, we're fine to accommodate additional people.
Okay.
I mean, I personally would like to keep it at 25. I just, I feel like that's a really, we get a really good cross-section of our community. I know that we can ask, but I'm not opposed to go into 30 if we, you know, if it's like, oh, yeah, we absolutely have to have this organization or that. I'm fine with that, too, but. Is he still having an issue?
He's on the phone right now with Chris Hall.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Powers, if we ask MCEA and ASME, do we just ask them who they would like to appoint? Is that the way that would work?
Yeah, I think that we would just go to whoever is the president of the union, and they would, they would just either, it would be them, or they would appoint someone to serve, is what I think. What do you guys think?
Have you looked at the list, Marsha?
I have, yeah.
The complete list?
Yes.
There's a lot of education people on here.
Yes, I noticed that also.
Well, we're looking for, you know, I like the fact that we're looking for an educator, but we also have quite a few business people as well. Which, yeah.
I mean, I think, I probably would go along with somebody from each of our unions, because they should at least, you know, have some say. But it just, it just makes this list very heavily weighted towards the educator, which is not good or bad, that's all. Just saying.
Yeah, and I see your point with that. So we could, let me just look at the list again, while they're trying to get Tony unmuted.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So maybe if we each, if anybody wanted to add one more, they could add one more, and then we also send a request to MCEA and ASME?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So they would each send a representative, and then everybody, if you have one more, you can have one more. If you don't have one more, you don't.
Yeah, I know Tony was, Tony had one that he did not fill. I don't know if he's.
His list only has three.
Yeah.
If everybody, if everybody then used five, and then we had two more, that would put it at 27, which I think, John, that would be acceptable, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask the board a question? What do you think about, I mean, we already have nonprofits covered, I think, but what do you think about United Way Board and Boys and Girls Club Board? I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were.
Can I just say that I thought we were doing four each plus the not-for-profits? And looking at the list, the larger not-for-profits, at least two of them are represented on the list. So that kind of shortchanges the general public from being on there, because the not-for-profits, we don't consider at least five of them being on there.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Well, and I look at it, I kind of look at it, one of Lee's appointments was Dave Keaton from the Children's Services Council, which he really does kind of represent and collaborates with all the not-for, most of the not-for-profits in Martin County. So I feel really good with that, that they will be very well represented in, you know, representing the needs of specifically children in Martin County. So I feel good about where we are with that.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. In the faith-based community, is there somebody already on there that would represent the faith-based community that you can see?
I didn't see anybody from the faith-based community, let me tell you. I don't know everybody on the list. But I don't, I mean, there's people of faith on the list, but I don't believe there's any pastors on the list at all.
Well, isn't Zenobia, she's one. Zenobia Anderson is.
Right.
And she's one that I was thinking, one of the ones I was thinking about.
Yeah. I think she's a pastor, a minister now.
She might be.
Okay, so I guess we, do we, what do you all want to do? Do we want to make a decision today? Do you want to bring back your one more name? Plus, now I can't get back to my, hold on, I'm trying to get back to my screen so I can see everybody. Do we want to bring it back for discussion at our next meeting? We can talk, like you all bring back one more person. So we had, everybody's bringing back one more, plus MCEA. And I do think we should, and I don't know, we'll have to decide if faith-based is represented or not. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. I do think Zenobia is, would be a great representation of that, but depends on how you guys feel.
Well, I would think somebody, and I don't know, I don't know anything about Zenobia's, you know, if she's a pastor of a church or anything like that, but.
I think she is.
Certainly, I, you know, I'd ask Tony, because he's, she's on his list. So, you know, I can think of one or two others, not that there needs to be three on the list, but I could think of one or two others that wouldn't be a problem either for the list. I don't mind waiting personally on this till the next meeting, and then we can work out getting all the applicants in at the same time. That's just my.
So here's the thing. So the next meeting, everybody bring your one more.
I just got reconnected, sorry.
Oh, there you go, Tony. All right. I know we were talking a little bit about your list. You had four people.
Yeah, I got one other person to add. I'm sorry about that. I.
No worries. No worries. Okay, so what we had talked about was, basically, everybody, we want to add MCEA and ASME, so that they're represented at the table, whether it's their, whoever they choose to send to the table to review. And then we also talked about everybody adding one more person. But we were talking about certain organizations. I know Ms. Roberts had a really good one. I would really like to have, I have someone in mind for my fifth person. We wanted someone from the faith-based community. And I thought Zenobia could represent the faith-based community as well. I don't know. For some reason, I thought.
Yeah, that can, that's fine, yeah. She is a minister as well, so, yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Powers, may I ask you a question?
Of course.
So if we're going to ask, who will ask MCEA and ASME? I just want to make sure that, you know, that somebody approaches them. Will you be the one to do that?
I'll reach out to them and find out who their representatives will be.
Okay, thank you.
And then everybody at our next meeting, during a board information share, we can share out the final list, and that way, everybody will see who's on the list. If we, at that point, need to fill in any holes, I don't think we will, but we'll just go from there.
And Marsha?
Yes?
So I'm actually, when I talk to these people, I'm actually giving them the dates and saying it's probably in the afternoon. Is that afternoon, early evening? Is that what we anticipate?
That's what I have been telling people, because the majority, all of my people work, so we probably, John, do you want to address that?
Our timeline, and what we found to be very successful, was 6 o'clock.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I've just been sending a copy of the dates in the timeline, so everybody has those dates on their calendar. And I will say, it's been great, because I think everyone who I've spoken to is, you know, just really excited to serve and participate. So, Ms. Deffentaller?
Can you see me if I raise my hand, because I'll do that instead. I'm sorry.
Well, it's weird, because I can't see everybody at one time, so.
Okay. I just, I just want, now I forgot what I wanted to ask you. I wanted to ask you, can we each just send our name to Diane, so that she, so that it's on the list, and we can look at the list at our next meeting? She can just add it to the list, okay?
Yeah, so we'll add it to the, we'll add everybody's names to the list, and then we'll present it to the board at our information share section of the agenda. Because we don't really need to vote on that yet, but we'll just put it out there as an information share.
So are we doing four or five now? Is it five per member now?
So we all agreed that we're going to add one more.
All right, so I need to add two then, because I only had three.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would add two more, Tony.
And then we're, everybody add one more, so it'll be six, five total, each board member, and then ASME and MCEA. So 27 total. So is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Go to my other computer. Okay, so we have open to the board, if anybody has anything. I have something, but go ahead. Ms. Roberts?
So Andrea, if Andrea is still there, yes, Andrea is still there. So if Andrea can maybe talk about the letter that they sent, FSBA sent?
Yes, that was, that's what I was going to ask her to address that, because we, as a board, are getting a lot of, I know, I've seen that they're coming to all board members, people anxious about August and what that might look like. And so, please, Andrea?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate, Marsha did ask me, even before this meeting started, if I'd stick around and address this topic. Wanted to make sure you knew that your FSBA Executive Committee, and I think you all know who those members are, have been meeting pretty regularly about kind of what does the fall look like. I know that FADS came out with some recommendations, actually, on Monday of last week. And we've been talking for a while, sent the letter out today, finally got some language that we, that we all agreed on. But the big key for us is flexibility, and that any statewide conversations that take place ought to include school board members, who we point out in our cover letter to the governor and the commissioner. The Constitution of the State of Florida recognizes as those that have both the responsibility and a. and authority to operate, control, and supervise all of the public schools within the school districts. So we were very respectful in our cover letter as well as in our report. We focused first on health and safety, second on mental health, which is a part of health and safety, third on collaboration, and fourth on flexibility, both with regard to state rules and with regard to money. As we look forward to the opening of the 2021 school year, we really believe that boards are going to have to plan for as many contingencies as possible. We've been saying you're going to need a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D. We expect there to be a series of what we're calling next normals. So there's not going to be a next normal, there's going to be several different next normals. And we also believe that throughout the school year, there may be waves of attendance that would come up or down within communities depending on potential outbreaks within the communities. And so we're, we're really challenging school boards to think about what kind of flexibilities they're going to need to put within their own parameters and asking the state to have flexibilities within their continued guidance because each district is going to have to respond differently and in unique ways to whatever challenges their community happens to be facing at the time. We really felt that it was important to only ask the state for permission or for those things that only the state must do or need to do. We believe that school boards already have quite a bit of authority and so we wanted to retain that authority and recognize that authority while asking for the flexibility. So that letter came in an email earlier today to all school board members. We actually sent it out late last night to members of our Board of Directors. We did get some good input. In fact, Lee Roberts, who represents your district on the Board of Directors, sent us some suggestions that were very helpful, as did some others. So we sent that out today. I got some positive response, not from the Commissioner of Education, but from the Chancellor of Education, looking forward to working with us. And as we continue to get feedback, we'll share it. We felt it was important for the school board members' voice to be out there and to be heard. But at this point, there is still so much unknown that right now, we really believe the only thing we can do is, the only thing we can predict is that it's going to be unpredictable.
Yes, I agree with you, Andrea, and I think that, you know, I know that as individual school board members, we're getting so much.
I don't know, hearing people.
Are you hearing me? Are you hearing me now, Andrea? Hello? Nobody, I can't hear anybody.
Now I've got you.
You got me? Okay, yeah, so I appreciate you talking about that, just, you know, just letting the public know that we are having these conversations. And, you know, I think on future times, we need to, as a board, sit down and talk about this with the superintendent and, you know, what. And I think a lot of it is going to be about making people feel comfortable and safe with the decisions that we make for the coming year. And, you know, I keep telling people, nothing is, nothing is going to look the same as it did pre-March. So a lot of, a lot of changes, and I know that is, you know, fearful for a lot of people. So change is really hard, and especially when health is an issue.
Yes, and just to that point, if I may, that's the reason we put health and safety first in this because we know that schools are not going to open unless communities and families have the confidence that they can send their children to schools in a safe environment. That's why we, that's exactly why we put that very first on our list.
Well, thank you. Is, are there any comments from the board, questions for, for anyone? Ms. Roberts?
I'd like to also thank FSBA for everything they're doing and for the leadership team and for those calls that you are all having on Fridays. Those are very helpful, there's a lot of information, I really appreciate that.
I do too, it's really been very helpful. I really do appreciate all the work that you all have been doing to keep us informed, thank you.
Absolutely. It has been, it's really helpful to hear from your colleagues too, around the state and what everybody is doing. And so it's, that, you guys are doing an amazing job and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Deeterleese, did you have something? I see you unmuted yourself.
Well, I did, I just wanted to say thanks to them also, they're doing a great job and as they always have, so we're thankful for you all to be there.
Thank you.
All right, any other board comment?
I do have, if we're doing, are we doing open to the board at this point?
Absolutely, yes.
So I do have some concerns, I've been hearing from quite a few constituents and I just feel the need to bring this up at this meeting today. I know it's not necessarily under our purview, but I have to listen to what parents and constituents are telling me and I just want to put it out there. But I received several emails from parents from Anderson Middle School regarding the two upcoming assistant principal vacancies. And first, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Milton and Mr. Flanagan for their upcoming retirement. I wish them the best of luck and I thank them for all they've done on behalf of our students and families. But it's evident from the communication from parents that there's a concern regarding who will be selected to step into those two positions. The parents have expressed that they would hope that the superintendent would consider the diverse student population as well as who would best contribute to the academic program. It was stated, and I have to agree with this, it was stated in one of the emails, that those who fill in these roles would share the established vision and have the background experience to enhance the school program. And that that would include expecting diversity in the leadership roles. And as one parent wrote, they're looking for leadership that will strengthen Title I schools by hiring administrators who are able to identify the strengths and weaknesses in the student population, but also have the ability to impact cultural awareness. And I think you heard from one of the parents this evening. It's important for students to see a leader who represents their diverse population. I think that's critical. I know that the superintendent sent us as board members a plan as to what direction she's going to go in. However, I do have some concerns regarding that. And, you know, one of the things that kind of was pointed out is that we tonight just interviewed for, on an internal auditor position, and there were five of us conducting that interview. And I feel like when, when personnel in the district, and this is not just now, I've been in the district for a while, are transferred, sometimes that's left up to one or two people rather than a committee or rather than an interview team when decisions are made. And my concern is, I would like to see the justification for the planned transfer just so that I understand it, so that when I am talking to parents, I can explain what the reasoning was. And I don't know if this is possible to look at or look to see that we have policies and procedures that are in place when the district staff's making decisions so that we can ensure that student population is considered and represented. So I just felt the need to say that tonight because I know that there's quite a few parents, and again, and I've said this to board members before, we have to be the voice for the voiceless. I know that Anderson Middle had several parents that contacted us, but I'm sure there's a lot of other parents that don't feel comfortable doing that or, or don't do that. And we have to look out for our students also. So I just felt the need to say that, I thank you for listening.
Yeah, so, Mr. Anderson, it looks like you want to say something.
Yeah. I've had the opportunity to actually work at Anderson Middle School under the two administrators, the two assistant principals that's retiring. And here's what I'll say, even in the best of situations, to have two seasoned administrators retiring, that is just kind of unfortunate. And I know it's nobody's fault, that's just the luck of the draw. Flanagan in discipline and Milton in curriculum, that's a tough act to follow, just regardless of what. So I can understand what's happening out there with parents and, and that's a good thing. These people were top-notch, they were good. And then with the leadership of the principal, I mean, they formed a heck of a team. Now, I will tell you, I think I worked out there, I taught there about four or five years. I did not always agree with any of them, okay? So you need to understand that. But here's what I can tell you about them, they were always fair and respectful. And so that's what really makes the difference, because we all can disagree. But some people would disagree and they can be a little salty with it. But these people were always professionals and I had to respect them. And I tell you, that doesn't always happen with administrators. Sometime they have the attitude, it's my way or the highway. So these guys formed a heck of a team out there and they were pretty unique. So I can understand even just losing one of them, what could be happening. But they're losing two, so you've got to be sensitive to what's going on there. Now, as a school board member, I got sense enough to know that my duties are not to hire and fire people, that's the superintendent, okay? But what I do know is that I was elected, and yes, we live in a democracy, but more importantly, we live in what we call a republic, which means that the citizens elect me to represent them. Now, I'm not saying just because they holler and scream, they always get what they want, no. Because if that's the case, you know, we always be changing things. But what I've got enough knowledge to know, when you hear a lot of concern, then it causes me concern to take a deeper look in things, okay? And just from past knowledge, I don't think it has anything to do with the current administration. I think it's just the way it's always been, working in a small district, okay? It's always been the tradition here, I don't know if they have more time on their hands than in a big district, but to me, a lot of the, I shouldn't call it nitpick, but a lot of the things that they, a lot of top administration really get involved in, in a bigger district, that would not be the problem. Here's what I'm saying, the hiring of a principal, that's important. But if I hire a principal, I've got all the confidence in the world in them, or I should. And if I've got all the confidence in the world, I'm going to allow you to pick your assistant principal. Why? Because number one, you're going to work there with them every day. And it seems as if, if, you know, I got to continue to listen to see what's happening. And I am a little concerned because the people are concerned. I didn't think this, it'd be mine, I wish it would go away, but it's not and it's here. And I'm not going to run from it, okay? So there's some real concern there. And some of the things I've heard, it is legit, but I'll go back to what I'm saying. It's been tradition in this district where pretty much central station push a lot of the buttons that really I don't think they need to. Such as, you know, when you hire a principal, you know, you got, even with some teachers, I think, it's got to go downtown and this and that. For God's sake, delegate. Have some confidence in the people or don't, don't get them, okay? And what's, what's happening now, it's just losing two seasoned administrators are causing a whole lot of concern. And we need to just kind of see what's happening. Now, again, I can't do anything about this because this is not under my, you know, title. But what I can do something about is to examine the policy. And if the policy is not consistent and if it leaves room for crazy stuff to go on, then I'm going to do everything I could to tighten that policy up. From a standpoint of view of how they are hiring these people and to have some consistency and be equitable and be fair across the board. Not pick and choose when you're going to decide, you know, that's just not the way it should go. So I'm attached to this because I taught there and I don't know a lot of these people, I don't know very few of them. But they're sending me these emails and they're concerned. And like I say, as Ms. Deffentaller said, I have a right to respond. And that's what I'm doing. But we need to take a look at this because those, that's a tight-linied group out there. And because of the leadership, the parental involvement is there and you need to respect these people and listen to what they're saying. Even the teachers are going to be going through as tough times as it is. So again, losing two administrators, not one but two, everybody's going through changes. So we need to be sensitive and sensible in how we do things. And I'm going to leave it at that for now.
So, so thank you all for your comments, I really appreciate it. I, you know, I just, I just want to reiterate, you know, our role, like you said, Mr. Anderson, we're policymakers. It's really the superintendent's role to go through that process. She heard the same things that we did. So, you know, I really feel like our role is to give her the chance to respond to that and to address the concerns that are at that school. Now, when it comes down and we have to approve the, who it is, we, that's going to come on our agenda. If you have concerns about it, that's the time to address it. But I really feel like, you know, at this point, we give the superintendent the opportunity. She, she's heard from board members and she's heard from parents about how they feel about that and they feel very strongly. And it is, it is, it's a tough time in education as a whole because so many great quality people are retiring and we're, we can't replace them fast enough with those seasoned administrators that we're used to having here in Martin County. It's just, it's a really difficult task. So, you know, I think right now, we just, we give the superintendent the opportunity to respond to this. Let us know if you want to communicate with her prior to that. I think that it is very appropriate for individual board members to talk to her and talk to her about, you know, what their concerns are. And I think she heard our, the message loud and clear today from parents and from, and she's getting the same emails that we're all getting as well. So, you know, I just, I think we, we give it, give her the chance to respond and then if we need to step in, I think that there will be an opportunity for us to do that. So, Ms. Gaylord, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Marcia. And I do appreciate that and I am happy to meet individually with any board member that has any questions about this.
Yeah, and if there are parents that are listening or parents that have come to public comment as well, I mean, I think it's, it would be worthwhile to, you know, reach out to them and find out. And even the administrators at the school, like what are the qualities that they're really looking for? And, you know, we want to put the best people at the schools, everybody wants that. Nobody, nobody wants to put the wrong person. So, you know, I think we all have the same end goal in mind, you know, so we'll get there. I, I'm confident we will get there. So is there any other board comment? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I don't, we don't have anything else. Ms. Gaylord, did you have anything, any superintendent comments that you wanted to make?
No, I just wanted to make a comment though about something that you guys talked about going forward. So just for your information, the team is already working on a plan for reopening school. Matter of fact, it's on my agenda for tomorrow morning with Executive Cabinet that I am going to assign reopen kind of task force to have parties involved in what that might look like. And I agree, there might be several different plans for that. And, you know, as, as we reopen and as we can kind of move forward and look at maybe what does August look like, what does September look like? I think that it, it becomes the new abnormal, okay? I don't think there'll be anything that's normal about it. So it's, just becomes the new abnormal. So, but I, rest assured, staff is already working on this. So I don't want you to think that we're not thinking about this already.
Mrs. Gaylord, I'm sorry.
No, and I appreciate that. And I would really like some more communication with the board because I have been talking to a lot of people around the state about what that's going to look like and also parents because, you know, it is about fear really right now, fear of the unknown. And there are going to be multiple circumstances that we're going to have to address. So there is not going to be, I, in my mind, there might not be a typical school day from eight to three or whatever that looks like. And there may be a hybrid of some doing virtual and some, we just have to, you know. But I would really appreciate it if the board could be a little more involved in that because it is something we're going to have to approve in the end. I'm happy that you're having those conversations. If someone wanted to be a part of that and report back to us on a regular basis at our meetings because I think it's really important that the public here, kind of, I know we don't want to put things out there that we're uncertain about because that just creates more questions. But, you know, at least have an update on where we are in that planning process.
Right, and obviously, you know, there's a lot that goes into that. And so, you know, let us get some type of, you know, some plan down so we can come and probably work with the board and share at a workshop. I know that I spoke to Mr. Olnick today and they do have a state board meeting coming up next week. So going to ask the team as far as, you know, what are concerns and issues? And so, you know, as we hear from, you know, the state board as well as things that are coming from DOE, trying to put all this together into something going forward. But yes, absolutely, we'll come to the board.
Yeah, he, yes, Mr. Olnick reached out to me yesterday as well. So I'm glad that it's, it's on everyone's radar, so I appreciate that. Ms. Deffentaller?
I just wanted to ask the superintendent if she would, I would hope that parents and teachers, some teachers would be included on the task force because I think we all as board members, and maybe you also received a letter from it, or an email from a teacher who's very concerned about coming back to work and making sure that they're going to come back. making sure that if they're going to come back, that health and safety is first and foremost, but seemed very concerned about what they would be coming back to if they were asked to come back. And then also, parents, I think if you have parents on the committee as well as teachers on the committee, they will feel more comfortable because they've been a part of the decision-making process, so that was, that's just a suggestion. But I would think that, you know, having all the stakeholders involved could be very helpful in terms of communication with, with the community.
I think one of the things too, as we see things open up more, I think we will learn from the experience and how that rise is going to continue. As you know, we have not seen numbers falling, we've seen a continued rise, and as things open up more, what that's going to look like in the, you know, the coming few weeks before we get to August, and I think all of that information will be helpful for us as we plan.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you FSBA for coming and sticking, sticking through this with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to adjourn this meeting?
Alright.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Here we go, we're out.
Alright.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good job.
Yes, it was good, thanks.